Seven eleven, seven eleven, and welcome, everybody, to the Ojai City Council and Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency Regular Meeting at 7:00 PM, February 10, 2015. Could I have roll call?
Councilmember Clapp.
President.
Councilmember Wiret.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz.
Here.
Mayor Lara.
Here.
I just want to take this moment, first of all, and I didn't advise any of our staff, but it happens to be this day that my mother moved on four years ago, and I just wanted to recognize her as a proud son. When I think about my mother, I think about respect, discipline, and love. And I think about all those times where all of us, all her kids, which she had five, used to come in and say, "Mother, is the food ready?" And she'd always witty sense of humor, but she would always serve us with a lot of love and care. So I remember you, Mom, and we're here, and I just wanted to express that. Thank you, guys. I'm going to start with the Pledge of Leagues. May Councilmember Clapp lead us.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And today, we're going to start with the presentation, recognizing outgoing Art Commissioner Barbara Hirsch. And I'm going to present a proclamation.
Just the plaque?
Okay, I'm going to present the plaque, but first, I want to call up our Chair, Golden. She wants to comment, and then we'll move on and see if anybody else has comments.
Yes, I think this is probably more than a comment. Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor Lara, for this opportunity to honor Commissioner Barbara Hirsch, who's sitting right here behind me, for her nine years of volunteer service on the city's Arts Commission, as a member and also as a past Chair. Barbara and Tony Hirsch moved to Ojai in 1999, and almost, if not immediately, the Hirsches became involved in the Ojai community as visionaries and volunteers. They were even awarded the distinction of Living Treasure Couple. I think they may be the only ones.
(Laughter).
Oh, there are a few, I'm hearing, behind me here. Barbara was a key player in the arts in Los Angeles and Orange County, and while there, she chaired UCLA's Committee for Art Placement at Tiverton House, which is a hundred-room hotel for recuperating, for the family members of recuperating patients. She bought, she brought that vision and co-chaired our hospital's Operation Picasso program, where over 200 fine art pieces now grace the walls of the hallways, the patient rooms, and even at the long-term care facility behind the hospital. Barbara has a passion for the positive connection between art and health. In addition to her lead role in Operation Picasso, Barbara has served on the Ojai Valley Hospital Foundation Guild. She's been on the Ojai Music Festival Board and served as its president, the Community Memorial Hospital Arts Advisory and Oversight Committees, the Board of the Rubicon Theater Company, and the Ventura County Arts Council and Arts Live. She's a member of the National Association of Women in the Arts. Barbara has conceived and led art tours and music tours to LA and Orange Counties for the Ojai Festival's Women's Committee. I was lucky enough to go on one of these tours in 2012 to see the Beatrice Woods retrospective that Barbara completely arranged. One of the most exciting tours I ever went on, we visited three museums. Barbara somehow arranged lunch on this incredible patio in Los Angeles. We all ate lunch. She arranged the whole thing. Barbara was appointed to the Arts Commission in 2006 and has served the past nine years until just this past December, 2014. While on the Arts Commission, she advocated passionately for a rewrite of the Public Art Ordinance. She took a headfirst plunge along with Susan Stinsmuelin Amand and Mimi Moore, who are both here tonight, to redo the complicated legal language of the Public Art Ordinance so that it would better serve the purpose of the Public Art Program. As a result of years of rewrites, the city adopted a new and robust Public Art Program Ordinance in January 2014. On the Arts Commission, Barbara also began an educational outreach program. Under her stewardship, the PBS series Art 21 was shown on the big screen at the Ojai Play House on Saturday mornings. Over $300 was donated by the public at those screenings for another commission outreach program, the Artist/Student Mentor Program. And of course, we all know the theater flooded, but Colette has assured us that once the new theater is open, that we will be able to return and continue our Art 21 program. Barbara also coordinated with the garden club the cleanup and planting of the courtyard right outside here, by the fountain, right here at City Hall. Her knowledge of fine art has been indispensable in advising the commission and the city of purchases for its municipal art collection. Now, as if this list of achievements isn't enough, there's Barbara herself, and she's every bit as worthy of commendation and maybe even a little awe. So Barbara, will you come on up here by me?[386.62][386.62](Applause). I have more to say. There's more. Barbara is one of those wonderful individuals who knows how to lead but not control, to give input and at the same time to listen thoughtfully, to debate but not be oppositional. Her experiences and knowledge inspire confidence and trust. She's kind, and she has an inner dignity. She knows who she is, and she keeps her eye on the prize, refusing to be caught up or sidetracked by irrelevancy.
Thank you.
I am grateful beyond measure for the hours Barbara and I, along with Steve McClary, spent this summer and fall redoing a handbook for private developers that matches the new city ordinance. I learned so much on so many levels, so thank you, Barbara, for being my public art mentor and also my personal role model. You brought decorum and an example of professionalism and right human relations to the commission. It was just a little bit easier to behave when I sat by your side at the podium. I do miss you. And I have a little quote from John Wesley. "Do all the good you can, by all the means you can, in all the ways you can, in all the places you can, at all the times you can, to all the people you can, as long ever as you can." And that just makes me think of you, what you do.
Thank you so much.
So congratulations on a well-deserved recognition.[486.61][486.61](Applause).
Mayor Lara and the City Council. Christine, thank you for this great honor. It's humbling, really, to hear these words, and I never knew all these things about myself.[508.36][508.36](Laughter). I should really be honoring all of you for allowing me to indulge my passion in public art, arts education, and art acquisitions while serving on the Arts Commission. Really, thank you so much for that. It was a great pleasure to be a member of the Arts Commission for nine years and to work with my fellow commissioners and some of the commissioners who are no longer on the, on the commission, with the support and masterful guidance of Steve McClary. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.[549.41][549.41](Applause).
And I'm going to open it up and see if other commissioners or people in the audience have some comments. Yes, Commissioner Conrad.
I'm Roger Conrad, one of the Art Commissioners, and I really want to say how much I appreciate having Barbara on the commission and how much I've learned from her insight and her wisdom in working on things so much. But I'd also like to speak as an artist in that she's promoted so much of us in Ojai, and she even buys the art, too. That's really kind of a neat thing. But also involved us in many things like the Picasso Project, and now there's just a lot of excitement about what's going on at the Memorial Hospital. There's literally going to be hundreds of art pieces put into that new hospital, four floors, and there's many, many Ojai artists, so we really appreciate her so much for what she's doing.[609.76][609.76](Applause).
Anybody else? Yes.
I'm Michael Addison, also a member of the Art Commission. The thing that I think is most remarkable about Barbara Hirsch, in addition to the many attributes and activities that we've talked about, is the fact that she lives her beliefs. Her commitment to the arts is exemplary in the sense that she has devoted time, hours, and who knows how much of her attention to expanding the impact of the arts. And I think that comes from her fundamental belief that art is more than an adornment, it's more than an accessory, that it is indeed fundamental to our lives. And in that sense, Barbara has informed the Art Commission over the past nine years that she's been a member with an ethos that I think is so singular, and yet at the same time, it seems to me, so representative of what we believe in Ojai, that art is important. And for that, I thank Barbara.[681.01][681.01](Applause).
Yes.
Hello, Susan Stinsmuelin Amand, past board, past commission member. I just want to say that for 14 years, I was on the Arts Commission, and Barbara was one of my favorite people to work with and one of the most helpful, and everything else has pretty much been said and said very well. But I will say that it's, you know, I was on long enough to be able to know that how many good people there are in our community, how skilled so many of them are that serve, that offer themselves up to guide the city in all matters, and I'm just blown away by that continuously, and Barbara exemplifies one of those people I'm talking about. So thank you for your support for the arts.[742.32][742.32](Applause).
Anybody else? Anybody from the council or staff? No? With, oh, yes.
I just want to, I just want to say that for the years that I've been involved in the council and before that, the Planning Commission, and being involved with the liaison to the Arts Commission, Barbara, you were, you were just a joy to watch, watch you interact with your fellow commissioners, listen to your, your advice and guidance and your, your thoughtfulness when it came to the arts and public art particularly. It was really a pleasure to have you on there, and I can't thank you enough for, for the number of hours you dedicated to that. The city of Ojai is much better off because you were on the Arts Commission. Thank you.[791.43][791.43](Applause).
With that, on the behalf of the city of Ojai, I'm going to present you with the plaque that reads "Art Commission and Appreciation for Dedication. Dedicated Service, October 19, 2006 to December 31, 2014." Thank you.[811.43][811.43](Applause).
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you so much for that. Congratulations.
We will be moving to, on with the proclamation for the California State Board of Equalization Earn-Income Tax Credit. Whereas insufficient income contributes to many of the social and human services needs in our state, and whereas the federal Earn-Income Tax Credit, EITC, provides tax relief and income support to low-income working families, and whereas every 800,000 families who qualify for EITC fail to apply for the credit, representing a loss of 1.2 billion in increased income for local communities, and whereas every resident earning less than 52,427 a year may qualify for 6,143 in EITC, which may be used to lower their taxes or increase their tax funds, which in turn may help the local economy. Now, therefore, it is be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Ojai encourages the city to utilize existing communication mechanisms to inform citizens about the availability of the federal income, federal Earn-Income Tax Credit and Volunteer Income Tax Assistant Program. Be it further resolved that the City of Ojai joins the California State Board of Equalization, Franchise Tax Board, Internal Revenue Services, and Jerome E. Hawthorne, Horton, pardon me, Chairman to the California State Board of Equalizations in advocating the Earn-Income Tax Credit and the Volunteer Income Tax Assistant Program to qualify families and individuals. Now thereby, I, Mayor Severo Lara, on behalf of the City Council hereby encourage the community to seek information about federal Earn-Income Tax Credit and Volunteer Income Tax Assistant Program. Is somebody from the Board of Equalization here to receive that? Yes, thank you. And may you state your name?[975.12][975.12](Applause).
My name is Alfred Conoa. I'm with the Board of Equalization in Chairman Jerome Horton's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the City of Ojai for this great honor. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.[986.62][986.62](Applause). Oh, I need to sign it.[990.12][990.12](Laughter). Thank, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Lara, I just wanted to mention that I'll have information available for this program. I'll get it from Jerome, so if anyone's interested, please contact the city clerk's office.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Jerome, if you have any suggestions for how we can fulfill the promise of this resolution, please devote, you know, direct them to Rhonda in terms of, you know, be it resolved that we're supposed to utilize existing communication mechanisms. Any suggestions? Give them to her.
Thank you. So moving on to our commission report, I'm going to start with our Arts Commission.
Okay. You know, I love to get up here and make you all laugh and smile and tell you all the good news about the Arts Commission, but I found it almost impossible to sit and listen tonight to the Historic Preservation Committee and what they had to say about ordinances and whether or not ordinances are being followed. And I've decided that I'm going to speak up at this meeting as a follow-up to the joint meeting and let you know, since you are asking for this information, that in addition to what has happened in the Historic Preservation Committee and that ordinance, that there is now on the books an art ordinance. You approved it in January 2014. It says that a building permit cannot be issued if a property or if a development qualifies for public art without first going through some very specific public art procedures and steps. And the Inn was issued that permit without those steps being followed. Now, I had the pleasure of meeting with Brian Skaggs and with Alex Kim over at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa a week ago, this last Friday, and much to my dismay, I was told that they were told that they, the city said they did not have to follow the ordinance, that it was waived for them. So just bring that to your attention because it's certainly disturbing to hear that. But that's not all. It was also suggested to me that I watch the Planning Commission meeting that was held last week, and I haven't watched the Planning Commission, but I have been given some input on it. And I was also told that the Arts Commission, the Arts Commission's feet, let's say, were held to the fire when it came to giving a reason to the Wiles as to why they now qualify and they must do a public art project. And I want to make it really clear that no one, no one on the Arts Commission walked over here to City Hall and told anyone that now the Wild Academy must do a public art program. First of all, it was completely unclear to me that when you apply for a new conditional use permit, a CUP, that that means that everything starts anew and that now that project is under the new ordinance. I didn't know that, and I doubt very much if any of my fellow commissioners knew that. So none of us were the ones that went and put this ball into motion. I think what happened was that someone here at City realized that they have to start paying attention to the ordinances. They let it go with the Ojai Valley Inn, and maybe perhaps now they were thinking, boy, we better not let that happen with Wild Tennis Academy. So just want to make it perfectly clear. And I also want to say on behalf of the commission that something has to be fixed. Something's really broken when it comes to what the ordinances are, how they're being conveyed to the people they affect, and the timeline on that. Anything that I can do as Chair of the Public Art Committee, anything at all, I'm happy and willing to do. Please just let us know what we can do to help this process along. But we also count on all of you to ensure that this ordinance that we worked so hard on and that we just congratulated Barbara Hirsch for having such a hand in is followed. Otherwise, what does it mean if we can just say, doesn't count here, it doesn't count there? So not a happy report tonight, but I really felt it was important to bring this up. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Golden. I do have a couple of questions just real quick for you in terms of, you mentioned that none of you came to City Hall and said, or were unaware that when a new CUP was processed or going through the whole Planning Commission, that it is subject to the current ordinances. And I also watched that, the tape, I watched, I tried to watch all of them, believe it or not, and I think it was our attorney that, our Mr., Mr., no, Mr. Summers, Summers, that did read the code there and started to address that there. So nobody else but our city attorney, and that, that was, I think, important to start following our ordinance. I definitely agree with you. And in terms of the Inn, you mentioned that your ordinance was to start in January. I think that work permit, I think, was issued in December. Or no?
New ordinance, Mayor Lara, is in effect to 2014.
Twenty fourteen. Oh, January 14. So we, I, I do feel like we need then to report on that if that's the case, because we do need to start, it's been a recurring issue, and we need a, some type of mechanism to not only inform our commission but also inform our public of what these ordinances, and I agree with you. Clarity, the interpretation, and the timeline would be, would be very valuable.
And, and may I add that I think it's important for, I don't think it's the position of the Arts Commission to follow up with the Inn and what they're doing, but they're, of course, in arrears because they have not done the steps that were required before the building permit. And so as Chair of the Public Art Committee, I am anxiously awaiting to see how far along now in the process they are. A group called the Committee to Approve Public Art, Kappa, needs to be formed and needs to review the art project that they're going to propose, and they need to be getting going on that because it should have been done before they were ever issued a building permit.
And I believe some of my colleagues have some question or comments.
Well, I just, I just want to amplify what you said, Mayor Lara, that I feel it's an important principle for me as a City Council person to follow, and that is to do what I can to ensure that the ordinances are followed. If we have a problem with an ordinance, the appropriate reaction, our response to that is not to ignore it, but to change it. I think deciding to solve a problem with an ordinance by ignoring it is simply not good governance, and we should not do that.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz?
Yes, I just, I have a comment, and I couldn't agree with you more, Chair Golden. One of the things that I want to mention is earlier in our workshop tonight, we asked for a report on the situation with the fence that was allowed to go up. Tonight, we're now asking for a report on, I don't know whether the council wishes a report on Wild Tennis Academy, why the, why the Arts Commission wasn't brought back into the loop on that, and then our Chair being told that, the Inn was told that they didn't need to worry about the ordinance for that, and we're asking for that report. Several months ago, I asked for a report when it came to the debacle with the cell tower approval, initial approval, and I have yet to see that report. So what I would really appreciate is that whenever council asks for reports such as this, that somehow it gets put on a list so that when we get busy and we don't think of it, we don't forget that we asked for that report because we haven't gotten the report, and it's been several months on the cell tower. And I don't want to see reports on these issues that were brought in front of us tonight for them to fall through a crack as well.
Councilmember Clapp?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and, and I agree that the Public Art Ordinance is a very important one and should be followed by everyone, every applicant that is required to, to contribute public art with their development. And I, too, request that there be a report with, I'm not so hesitant to give a time certain on that as well. I would like to have it, have it at the first meeting in March.
Moving on with any other commissioners' report, do we have any chairs from other commissions? No? We're going to move on to public communication. It is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the City Council's Successor Agency Board on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matter raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council board and will be generally be referred to staff and/or placed on subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken. Persons wishing to address a council slash boards are requested to fill out a speaker's card prior to the council board reaching this point on the agenda. Comments may be limited to three minutes or less. Our first speaker's card is Ms. Williams. Audrey?
Thank you very much. I'm standing with Natalie of Young Life.
Yes.
Thank you to the Honorable Mayor and City Council and the people of Ojai. I'm Audrey Addison-Williams, a new resident to your town, moved here in early November, and I'm here to share what we consider to be pretty exciting news about a collaboration that started with Reverend Kathy Cap at the United Methodist Church, a church that has been in existence since 1957, and then led to Natalie and Young Life. We are proposing, asking the City Council to issue a proclamation declaring that February, which is Black History Month, and March, which is International Women's Month, be a celebration of diversity. We have a series of events planned, and we are building a collaboration that includes churches, nonprofits, business leaders. Kelly Swegel of the Heald Center is a newcomer to this town, a local businessperson. The purpose of our collaboration is to perhaps do something in Ojai that could shift our nation. We are divided, and we're never going to agree on some things, but are there certain things that we can agree upon? Is there a way for this town and other towns to come together across race and class and religious identification and gender and talk about ways to create jobs for our young people to help bring tourists to this area? And we have an event planned, and we have people coming from as far as Phoenix, and we're very excited. We have dynamic leaders who are volunteering their time for a series of events that begin February 21st. If you would just pass these out. And I'll give you a brief example. Dr. Michael Morgan, African-American professor in the Theater Department, I've heard a lot about the arts, at UCSB, is volunteering his time and will speak to us because for four years, he's been bringing youth from the Detention Center in Santa Barbara to UCSB to collaborate with his theater students on a production of The Odyssey. This program has gone on successfully for four years. It's a funded program, and he's looking to expand this. And so Michael Morgan will be here in Ojai on Sunday, February 21st, to share his knowledge with this community and to help in any way. We have Al Diaz coming from Orange County, who is Latino-American, recently retired executor from Toyota, who's been traveling internationally, as I have, working in grassroots level with young people, building bridges, economic development and job creation. We are very excited about the potential. Natalie has really inspired us. Reverend Kathy was in social services in LA County before coming to pastor this church, and she has in-depth awareness and knowledge of what it takes, the challenges as well as the opportunities. I've traveled across America, spent many mon- as the opportunities. I've traveled across America, spent many months in Africa. I've worked with women on welfare, helping them move from welfare to work. I've run transitional houses from men coming out of prison over the last 30 years, many amazing successes. And we're excited and happy about what we could possibly do. So, what we're asking is a proclamation, number one, declaring the beloved. Number two, we're asking that a press conference, we would call a press conference because we want the entire community to be aware. We want young people, we want artists, we want everyone to participate. And finally, we invite the Honorable Mayor to speak. We're having a VIP reception at the Heel Center on the 21st, and dancing and drumming and a festival like Ojai has never seen on the 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll be in communication with you, follow up and see what procedures have to be abide to.
Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Debra.
Thank you, Mayor Lara. Council members, Debra Pendry, 309 Riverside Road, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. We wanted to share with you the results of our seventh annual e-waste and recycling event, which happened Saturday, January 10th. And once again, it was cars, you know, bumper to bumper from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We collected over 12 tons of e-waste related materials, our usual thousand pounds or so of batteries. And we also take other hard to recycle items each year at this event. So, we did want to share with you, it was very successful, kind of depending on which, where you look at it. And that will be back on Saturday, January 9th, with our partners, the Ojai Community Bank and the Ojai Valley Directory. So, we think this is a very important community service that we provide. And it, I think it also reduces a lot of car travel so folks don't have to go out of the valley to do their e-waste recycling. And then, coming up is our fourth annual Ojai Valley Seed and Plant Swap. This is a lot of fun. It's always the last Saturday of February, so this year it'll be February 28th at the Chaparral Auditorium, 1:00 to 4:00 PM. So, we come together to swap and share seeds and cuttings and starts. And we invite folks to come and educate us on the local community garden, the bee club. We have a new woman in town who's actually creating waste stations for monarch butterflies. This is a brand-new thing we're real excited about. Rincon Vitova comes, talks to us about beneficial insects. So, it's just a great way to come together as a community, talk about gardening, local food, food security, and we invite the community to come out for that, again, Saturday, February 28th. And you can always can get full details on anything, events that we do at OjaiValleyGreenCoalition.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula.
Yeah, I have a presentation regarding item number four.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, now I see it. Thank you. So, I'll bring you up when the item comes. Jeanette Strubu?
Strub.
Strau? Strau? Sorry, sorry.
Isn't it Strau?
Good evening, Yannika Strub. I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Mr. The Mayor, the city council members, and the community members present here. Our statement letter to the city was included in your packet, and it explains the position of the Ojai Music Festival on the lanterns displayed in the arcade.
It is, that is on the item, that is agenda, right?
Right.
It is.
Is it the wrong timing?
So, I'll bring you up when that item comes.
Oh, okay. I thought you were calling my name. Sorry.
Yeah, this is public comment. So, this is any item that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So, I'll call you up when we get to that item. There's two more that don't specify. They have number signs, but Linda Clark?
I think they want to speak on M1 zoning. Is that correct?
Oh, no. Okay. Okay.
Who wants to speak about it? It is connected to M1, your M1, but it's totally different.
Okay, great.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Lara. I'm here tonight because, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Linda Epstein, and, one for each of you, is what that is.
Your time is going.
Okay, my time is going. What I'm, at 520 Buckboard.
We'll reset it again, if you could reset it.
Thank you, Mayor. Linda Epstein at 520 Buckboard in Persimmon Hill, which is a, zoned an R04 property. It is adjacent to an M1 property as well as the Ojai Valley Racquet Club. And the Ojai Valley Racquet Club and the Wild Tennis Academy have come forward with an ordinance. I wrote you a letter yesterday, and I wrote the wrong ordinance number. It's ordinance 821. And the document was to, to bring the attention to you that the general plan was not taken into accountability. And I feel that there was a very large error that was made. And I'm here because I'd like to understand how the project, such as the Wild Academy, can be so far along since 2009 or 10 or 11, and we had no notice until 2000, November of 2014. Persimmon Hill is a community that is, has the most restrictive zoning, and that restrictive zoning is in your packet. Okay. So, let's see. The Tennis Wild Academy has been winding its way through the city's process since November 2011, and it is now in the Planning Commission for a revised design review. The entire process, there has been no acknowledgement in prior submissions to staff reports or other materials in the record relating to the project, and that it is located immediately adjacent to the parcel zone residential R04 use, Persimmon Hill. The record of this project contains errors, confusion, and revisions to the project, confusion within numerous versions of the conditions of compliance which have gone through. And those periods have, we were notified after those periods had become finalized. So, there was no voice at that time. Now, it is open for a review once again because they have come back to council. And the records in the city show a completely different zoning than we have. So, when we go back and we look at the first page that you have, which is an R, which says, "Ojai Valley Racquet Club CR," and it's adjacent to a M1, which is on Bryant Circle. And it is also adjacent to R04 properties, which is probably a collection of 150, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, 60 houses, 60 houses that are seeking the benefits of the location that they purchased, which is also in your packet. And it says that it is very low-density district. The district is intended to provide quasi-freedom, quasi-rural atmosphere for individuals and families who desire a high degree of independence from their neighbors. The dwellings, one unit per four acres, and the zoning is consistent, district is consistent with very low-density residential land use designation of the general plan. There's additional information, I'm sure, that can be provided for you as to R04 zoning. And if you continue to turn the pages, you will see on page, it should be, actually, I think it's the last sheet that you have. It's one, it's page one of two, at the very end where it says Administrative Report. You will see that project location of 428 Bryant Circle, Grand Slam Investments LLC, Mark and Jane Wild, and the general plan designations, north, south, east, and west, make no reference to the existing properties which have been there since the early 80s. So, now that the ordinance 821 has gone through, and the CUPs for line lot adjustments, and for a Grand Slam height, 35-foot light tennis courts, four other courts with 22, three other ones, and I'm sure more to come, to this nonprofit school, is absolutely a destruction of our property. And this ordinance went through, and I met with, I've met with planning, I've met with Mr. Clark, I've tried to get in touch with some members, and I've also spoken in detail with the planning department, who is a new planning Kathy and your Kathy Wald and your contract planner. And nobody understands why everybody has been relying on information that is inaccurate. And so, I'm looking for a remedy. And I don't know what kind of a remedy that you can offer, but you have violated your own Ojai plan, general plan. And right now, I'm watching 40-foot trees being cut down on adjacent land that is and should have remained designated as CR.
Well, thank you, Ms. Clark. I know, I do want to stay true to three minutes and allow you the other three. And I do want to remind you that we, because this isn't an agenda item, we're not.
No, I understand.
Able to, but I do want to ask staff, again, another report. It's just an ongoing issue.
Ordinance.
An ordinance and follow-up.
No notice.
Why these inconsistencies and misinformation is implied from, from when it started, 2001 up to 2014. So, thank you.
Real quick, Mayor, I'll, I'll be happy to supply you with all the documentation, which is quite extensive at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You'll get a better report from me than from the city.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comments? No? Yes, one, may you state your name?
It's a consent. Can we talk about the consent item? Or can, can that be?
Yes, which, which item?
It's a consent item E.
Okay. So, if, I'll pull consent item E.
Thank you.
And then, when we get to that, I'll call you up. And your name, sir?
Jeff Wells.
Jeff Wells. Wells. Okay, Mr. Wells. All right, anybody, so if there's nobody else for a public comment, I'm going to move on and see if anybody else would like to pull an item on the consent calendar?
I was going to ask for E as well, so.
Okay. And, okay, so, anybody else? Any other? Any motion to approve the other items?
Move to approve the consent items, let's see, A, B, C, D, F, and G.
Second. Roll call.
Clap.
Yes.
Wyrick.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Blatz.
Yes.
Lara.
Yes. And I'm going to pull item C, which is suspending enforcement of certain provisions of the M1 zoning district. And I'm going to open it up to Councilmember Wyrick, and then I'll go back to Mr. Wells.
Yeah, I was going to pull this anyway for purposes of proposed amendment to the resolution. I am open to other, obviously, other comments, and I just wanted to state what I was thinking of doing, subject to hearing, and that is a couple of things. One is that I think it's important, as I stated earlier this evening, that when we have a problem with an ordinance, and clearly we have one here, that we do not do indefinite suspensions nor indefinite moratoriums. We simply, I'm going to advocate that we stop doing that. And therefore, I'm going to suggest that in this resolution, that we put a date certain, that the suspension will be in place until a certain time or unless the council extends it. Language I was going to propose after discussion, and maybe will provoke discussion, is at the end of section two on page, on the page 1-38, that the period simply be removed at the end of the sentence and the words added, "until June 10th, 2015, unless extended by city council resolution." Second point I wanted to make by way of proposal, not yet motion. I think it's premature for there to be any findings about this issue. I have been surprised by the number of people with a lot of opinions about this matter already, frankly. And I therefore think that I could not vote for personally, since a vote says you agree with all the wherethes, that the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th whereas on page 1-37, where it states, "whereas the city council has determined that the complete ban on professional and administrative offices which are similar to and not more objectional than real estate offices may be unnecessary and could create an undue economic hardship for the owners, tenants, and potential tenants of numerous buildings with the M1 zone." I don't think it in any way impacts the suspension to simply delete that paragraph and wait for the Planning Commission to do its due diligence on the issue. Those are my comments by way of proposed changes.
Any other comments from council before I turn it to Mr. Wells? No?
I'd like clarification.
Yes, council.
Are we speaking to the whole area no longer being M1? That whole Bryant Street?
We're talking about the M1 zone.
Right. Just Bryant, right?
Right.
All of Bryant.
Right. And so, and so what we're talking about is just suspending the prohibition against offices that are professional and administrative.
One thing I really would like to address with this is we have precious little M1 in this community, very little. And I would hate to see us have no M1 left. And I think that's one speaks to really good reason to have it not, have a time certain on this. And I think that maybe the Planning Commission should look at it with that in mind, that maybe there's some way to preserve a certain amount of M1 so we don't cease to have any area designated in this community for light manufacturing, which is, I think, really important that we start encouraging, other than tourism, businesses other than tourism to come into the community, small food companies, for example, or other sorts of companies that could come in, that could augment our economy, and so we aren't solely dependent on tourism. So, I think that it's really important that we don't erode our M1.
Any other comments? Mr. Wells?
I just have a couple of points. I'm still kind of confused in the sense that, and I oversee and manage a property there, which actually caused this whole problem to begin with. I have an attorney that came in and an architect that came in for a, for a business license, trying to do everything above board. And I also have a project that was approved and signed off by Monty Witter, city attorney, for the subdivision track map and the CCNRs and who knows what else. But our project is an office park. It's actually called Ojai Office Park. So, I'm really confused as to even, why we're even having the conversation to certain extent. I understand there's more to this puzzle, you know, than, than just our specific site. But, you know, our property is located at 407 Bryant Circle. There's eight buildings on that parcel, and they are between 2,700 and 3,000 square feet. They are all built out. It's the jewel of Ojai, actually, because they're built out with Class A office space, the TIs. There is no manufacturing. And I don't even want to get into that because it's office. It was approved as an office site, and again, BST building, 25,000 square feet of Class A office space. Again, I don't even know why we're having, to certain extent, the suspension. I don't want a suspension on I don't want a suspension on our parcel. I don't, I mean, and so I think you need to look at this, the suspension and/or this recommendation, and take it a little bit more, you know, get a little bit more in-depth into actually what it actually means. The second point, and again, I think we need to have manufacturing. I love it when I get a tenant who says, "Hey, we make this." I think that's awesome, and I wish we had more of it. That whole area, you know, is sort of changed. Ojai, as everybody says, is sort of special. And so I think we need to look at, you know, we sort of need to look at that carefully when we're, when we're basically limiting the type of opera or activities that occur in such a small community. You know, we don't want to have empty buildings because we're waiting for that one manufacturer, you know, that, that makes a great widget. It may not happen. We would like to see, you know, businesses, you know, come in. So that's another thing. So I just say, you know, please, please look at that carefully. The other thing is, is that I really have a hard, and I have a hard time even addressing this, because my tenant called me and said, "Hey, by the way, I'm being told that I'm going to have to move out of your building." And as a landlord, you know, you freak out at that point. And I was basically told that my tenant went in, they went in for their business license, and they were told by a contract employee that they could not be in that building, that they may have to abate the building, I think is the exact wording. And we don't need that kind of, we don't need that kind of response. We don't need that kind of staff. We need to have staff that's working with the businesses, trying to make things happen in Ojai. And, you know, this person, this person, I understand they're a contract employee, and they probably don't know everything about Ojai. And they don't, you know, they probably didn't know, and I can accept that, and I understand my time's running out. But, but more importantly is that this person was rude, abrupt, unprofessional. And then I have to basically listen to that from my, from my tenant. And so I want, you know, it's kind of twofold. I hope that you guys look into that, and I hope that this, I hope that, you know, that it can be resolved really simply by, by basically saying, "Oh, yeah, you're a permitted office space."
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Any other comments from the public before I turn it back into council? Yes, yes, Mr. Clark.
My name is Joe Clark, and I live at five twenty Buckboard, and Bryant Street's directly behind me. And for years, I've argued that, and I was laughed out of here many years ago for saying it didn't have a vision. And it really does need a vision. And don't just send this to the planning commission, but include your citizens to decide on how to use that. Include the people who own those buildings. Include the people who live around it, so that you're building something that the community can really be proud of, and they've all gone joined together to make. Don't just give it back to the planning commission, because I have no faith in that planning commission. I've seen what they've done to me several times. So I'm saying be open to the public actually joining you and coming up with a solution. We're not your enemies, and we're not retarded being treated like your enemies. We're here because we're concerned, and we feel that we have something to contribute, and let us contribute it. And I'm through.
Thank you. I saw another hand.
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, my name's Stephen Bernstein. I'm the managing partner of four oh eight Bryant Circle. I'm in the middle of all this. I heard from three tenants today saying they're getting kicked out. No notice, no anything. I answer my phone, and this is what I hear. So I'm here tonight, and I see on the agenda that it's going to be suspended, the use, the restriction of a use that hasn't been restricted. There's tenants in there in that office park that, according to the paperwork now, maybe they shouldn't have gotten a license, but they got a license from the city. They paid their fees, and they're there operating legally. And all of a sudden, they hear this, no notice to anybody. I never got a notice. I built the building nineteen eighty-six. I've been here a long time. Usually, you get a notice. So there's something not working in the system. And I agree with the other gentleman that it'd be real nice if we could get the original use. Let me give you a story about the original use of the park. Way back when, and you still read once, once a month, no, I'm going to take it back. Once a year, you read about somebody's house burned down in Ojai because the artist is a ceramic artist, and the kiln caught fire. And somebody said, "Wouldn't it be nice if we moved all these people into one area, in an industrial area, and we wouldn't have houses burning down?" And you know what? Since nineteen eighty-six, there's not one artist in Ojai Valley Industrial Business Park. It was a great idea, but they don't want to be in there. So this park was started and planned as industrial. There's no industry to fill these buildings up. You can go to any building in there. There's very few, a very low percentage of people that build things. So it is what it is. And you can't just, you know, you know, you got an elephant, you can't say it's going to be a tiger. It is what it is, and you have to deal with it, and you have to give proper notice to people, so we can come and tell you what we know. I've been there longer than a lot of people that understand the park.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Wyrick?
I didn't have a question, but, you know, feel free to respond to what I'm about to say. I absolutely agree with all three speakers, and that is what motivates me with my proposals. Because here's what we have. I want to clarify, and you can, the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. We have an M1 zone for which building permits were issued. Apparently, that's one of the things I want to find out. Those building permits apparently were issued for purpose-built buildings for purposes that weren't consistent with that zone. That's a problem with city processes. I want to find out about that. Then we have a problem with, for years, business licenses clearance, zoning clearances not being processed properly. And we have a contract planner that decided to do it properly. There probably were some issues about how that was handled, I agree. But nevertheless, that doesn't take away from the problem that we got a problem with business license clearances not being handled properly, apparently, for years. So we're trying to fix it from the council point of view. And that, we're not trying to presuppose changing it all, not changing it all. It's just there's some due diligence here that needs to go about why it got to this point and what to do about it now without penalizing people in place. And that's the, why I think the proposal is here, to do a suspension. It's not appropriate to go into all the things about how we should change it right now, because that's, our processes go is, I know there's some issues maybe that you have with the planning commission, but everyone's free to be, testify to the planning commission, and then that comes to council, and then there's another hearing with council on any kind of an ordinance change, because that's what we're looking at. To accomplish what you want is an ordinance change to the M1 zone. And we have to go through that process to do that.
We would be happy to help participate if we get notified.
And I just wanted to say that in terms of asking for us to do something tonight about the zoning classification, we cannot do. There's a process for that, but we can suspend. And then put a date certain, we're saying, "You know what, staff and planning commission, we need a, we need a recommendation from you. Buy timely, right away, because this is a priority for council." And then not have any findings in there, and try to push the process to address this issue. So I wanted to let you know my thinking.
Thank you. Any other comments? I want to move to the public and see if anybody else has any comments?
Just one fact.
Just real quick, because I definitely agree with Councilmember Wyrick. We're not trying to get into the nuts and bolts of things. We're going to have the opportunity to do that.
Totally understand, just a quick fact. I think there's a lot of assumptions, because the zoning map, I believe, is dated two thousand and five. Our project was built in two thousand and eight. Assumption on our part is that it's been, you know, carved out, or it has some type of amendment to the, to the zoning map. Again, I think, you know, that's eleven years. I think we can color in a new map.
And why it wasn't done then, it's, it's a question. But we need to look at it. Right now, the issue is whether we're going to approve a suspension with the amendments that Councilmember Wyrick has posed. And I just want the, the public to have the opportunity to express any other concerns, thought, suggestions, so forth. So anybody from the public? No, with that, I'm going to turn it back.
Mr. Mayor, I want to just, I want to make a comment. I don't have an actual conflict on this matter, but if we're going to start deliberating, I, I haven't spoken purposely. I'm going to recuse myself from this particular agenda item only because of the appearance, not because there's an actual conflict. And the reason that I'm going to is because the lawyer that Mr. Wells was referring to happens to be my son that applied for a business license. And so I'm going to recuse myself from any further discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Clap?
And I would like to say real briefly that I think this brings up another question that we need to maybe address in the future, and we are coming up with our budget. And I think one of the things that has been neglected in our community is outreach for, for business. And most, most communities have an economic development department, and they are charged with doing outreach to, to encourage business to come to our community. Yes, Bryant is not, is not an M1 area. And personally, I have a business that is M1, but it wouldn't fit well, because we'd have diesel trucks coming right down Ojai Avenue, you know, two or three times a day. And it isn't really an appropriate use for an M1 to have all these, you know, going through town diesel trucks all day long. But there are uses at M1, for that area in M1, for kind of industry that would not have that kind of impact. And that's the kind of outreach we need to do. So I think we need to think in our future how we can encourage businesses to come into the community to, to, to support or be another way to encourage, I can't, I'm losing the word. I'm sorry, to augment our tourism. So it just, I'd like to encourage my councilmembers to consider that when we are looking at our budget.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back then to council and see if there's any further discussion, in particular to the amendments that Councilmember Wyrick has suggested in approving this consent item.
I'll go ahead and make that informal motion if you would like. I'll go ahead and move that we approve a resolution of the city, resolution E, a resolution of the city council of the City of Ojai, California, suspending enforcement of certain provisions of the M1 zone and directing the planning commission to review the purpose of the zone with the amendment of striking in its entirety the fifth paragraph, beginning with whereas, and adding the language at the end of section two "until June tenth, 2015, unless extended by city council resolution."
Roll call.
Clap?
Yes.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, perhaps it's important to inform the public that the practical result of this now is those tenants that maybe office uses in the M1 zone will not be forced to leave by the city as a result of this action.
You prospective tenants?
Tenants that are in the building now and tenants that may move in won't be forced to leave as a result of this.
Thank you for that point of clarification.
I, can we add one, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Haney?
Also, I think we have to look at the other side of that, too, is that we give ourselves a, a period for planning to review this. So, you know, it may not come back in, in a favorable action either. So you have to look at it both ways. I think that I would inform any tenant or any prospective tenant that you're going to lease to, that you let them know what's going on and what the process is, so that they can make a sound decision.
And I agree with that, but our building was approved as office.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll get into that, too. We're not going to get into the nuts, and definitely I would, I would love if Mr. Wells and Ber, Berstein would participate in this process. But I am going to move on with the agenda, and we're going to move on to item number two, city council goals. And we're going to start with the staff report on these, on these goals. Maybe call, oh, perfect.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council.
If you could please, though. Okay. Mr. Clark, floor is yours.
Thank you. I wanted to sort of set the stage for the discussion of goals by talking about some of the philosophy that's gone on in the past few years. And that is that, going back three or four years ago now, the city council identified the need to address infrastructure as its highest priority. And through the budgets over the past three or four years, what we've done is we've set aside money for infrastructure to the point where twenty percent of our transient occupancy tax is going into, into the capital improvement fund for infrastructure. And I think that that is paying off. We had a million-dollar paving project last year. We have another million-dollar paving project coming up. We've been able to repair the museum. We've been able to upgrade Boyd Center and the recreation offices, and many different projects that are way, we're way, way behind schedule. However, one of the results of that is that we have also made a conscious decision to keep staffing lean. And so when you go through the various departments, what you'll find is that we do have people who are available to do the ongoing operations of the city and to keep up with the work that way. And then a very few number of people, mostly at the department head level, who are capable of taking on special projects that come along over time. So as we talk about goals, at the last discussion of this a year ago, we identified a number of goals, and staff's been pretty much fully engaged working on those goals. And really, I don't think has the capacity right now to take on others, unless we defer some of those that maybe are a lower priority. Having said that, as we finish up various projects, we then do have the capacity. So I think a lot of this exercise is not saying what we will and what we won't do, but saying what we should do now and what we can defer to a later period of time. And I'm struck by the fact that things come up to change that over time. So, so for example, we didn't know until last month that we need to do a complete review of our height ordinance. And that's going to take resources to do. We're already spending time preparing the initial study so that we can do a negative declaration. So we have listed for you in this staff report the things that we're working on right now. That list can be reprioritized. And if there's other things that you'd like us to work on, we can do that. We just can't do everything all at once. And if you'd like more details on some of the projects or what some of the departments are doing, I'd be glad to provide that.
Just as a start of reference, I particularly, as a council member, to get a better understanding of what staff is capable of doing or not, could you go through all the department heads and explain how many employees are under each department and their, and their duties other than the council's priority? Do you have that information?
Yes, I sure do. So, so starting with administration, in the city manager's office, we have myself, the city manager, Steve McClary, the deputy city manager, and Rhonda Bessore, who not only is city clerk, but is also the records manager. And then we also have an office specialist. So Mr. McClary spends a considerable amount of his time supervising the recreation department, and has been allocated over there when we eliminated the recreation director position. But he is available to do some of the projects that are listed here and is working on them. And I myself take on a number of projects myself in addition to my normal duties supervising other staff, as does the city clerk. So really, you've got three people there who could devote some of their time to some of these projects. In the community development department, we have a director. We, in the budget, we have a part-time assistant planner, and that is temporarily being filled by contract planners. And then we have the building staff. Really, the, the building staff, which consists of the building official and the code enforcement officer and the clerk, three people, is fully engaged doing building activities. But many of the projects that are the highest priorities of the city council tend to fall into the planning area. So a lot, so the contract planner and the director of community development spend a lot of their time working on these projects. And actually, some of these projects spill over and are done in the city manager's office just as a resource necessity. In the finance department, we have a finance director, and then we have four other people who are technical staff. And really, the, the director has been involved in some special projects, such as the, the formation of the T-Bid that we use to fund our marketing. But for the most part, that position is fully engaged, probably overfully engaged, in just doing the basics, fundamentals of, of the accounting of the city. In the public works department, we have a number of people who are involved in maintenance activities, in transportation activities with the trolley system, with the maintenance shop. And then we have the public works director and two administrative personnel. And in, in that department, you'll notice that all of the reports are signed by the public works director. works director, and these reports are done in addition to his duties of executing the various public works projects that we have and supervising his staff and so forth. So then, in the recreation department, I indicated that we did eliminate the director of that department, and Mr. McClary is spending a portion of his time being director, and then we have a recreation manager, and they have been working on some of the projects, particularly those that fall within recreation, such as the master planning of Sarzati Park and working on the lighting of the skate park as far as getting planning approvals for that, working with the motocross people and so forth. So I hope that's helpful, but I'd be glad to provide more detail if needed.
Any of the council have any questions for staff?
In terms of the information by department, no, not that.
No. Any other questions for staff in regards to just the goal setting or?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Mr. Clark, in the council, what we just went through with item 1E is the, I think, an illustration of the, to make the point, and leads to the question I want to make, and that is, here we have something that is going to take planning commission time, it's going to take staff time, it's going to take city council time, for something that if had been handled properly at the beginning, would now be taking no time. In other words, if the zoning map had been rendered consistent with that development at the front end, if the business licenses had been properly, if processes were putting place for business license processing, we're fixing a problem that was perhaps avoidable. If we had better ways of handling what we're doing in terms of, you know, planning practices or whatever else. So what I'm trying to get at is, and I understand it's a small town with a lot of, you know, we have, we're small, but we are very ambitious in the city of Ojai. And then the other, is we have a lot of things we're trying to accomplish, and then the other side of that is we're small, so we're trying to do a lot with a small staff. And what I'm trying to get at is addressing the issue of, for lack of a better word, staff productivity, council productivity, commission productivity. All, it's one thing to talk about all these goals, but it's another, I mean, you hit the nail on the head, you know, we're going to have to do, all of a sudden, we got to do a height ordinance review, taking, and what do we do about that? But the other thing that's happening is what just happened with 1E. Stuff is coming up that we have to fix that if we'd had the right processes in place wouldn't have to be fixed. And how do we, kind of, almost it's like a self-audit or a performance audit or looking at our codes, I mean, it's a chicken/egg issue, is what I'm trying to say. And it's, we need to have, we need to maybe do better about our, what we have in place to pursue these goals so we're not just stretching ourselves thinner and thinner and thinner and getting these dysfunctions that occur.
So, could I address that a little bit?
Please.
Because I think, you know, I think that is a really important point, but I also think it's one that we've tried to recognize as we've gone forward. And I, you know, when I look at the history of Ojai, we went through two recessions. The first recession was when the Ojai Valley Inn closed, and our source of funding was cut off for longer than we expected, and then as soon as that happened, the inn didn't even have a chance to build up its revenues, and we hit the national recession or the international recession, whatever it is. During those periods of time, we fell way behind in staffing and way behind in capital improvements. That's, you know, 10 years of not spending money on our roads, not spending money on our buildings and so forth, but it's also 10 years of having very thin staff. For example, when I first got here, we had one-half planner. That was the staffing of the community development department. So as we've had opportunities to change staff, what we've looked at is providing more resources in the areas where there are higher priorities and more priorities, and being more lean and effective administratively. So, it's, we've, because we've computerized some of our processes in the finance department, we were able to limit a full-time accounting position, and we're still able to do the same work that we were before. Because we've decided to contract out for maintenance services, you know, cleaning the restrooms and emptying the trashcans and so forth, we're able to accomplish with less money and less staff some of the maintenance functions that we had before. Because we went with a contract building official and contract building inspector, we're able to perform that function at the same level but for less money. And the savings, rather than putting that into capital improvements, that actually went into more staffing. So we do have a full-time community development director, we do have the budget to cover a part-time planning assistant, and we do now have a budget to cover a part-time code enforcement officer, all of which address these priorities. So I think we've tried to look for efficiencies and take advantage of efficiencies and focus resources where the priorities are.
Any other questions or comments, staff, before I turn?
Just a quick one, and we're still struggling.
I just want to point out something that Councilmember Wyrick mentioned, is procedures and protocols, and another example is our cultural resources. Do we have those procedures in place that would have prevented some type of projects to go through, whether it be, or whether it be some, the 1105, or even, to an extent, other procedures like the cell tower would have gone through? Again, what do we address first? Is it procedures or these goals, which are equally important, I think, and it's just, again, issues that our commission had about code enforcement, about knowing what's on our ordinances, historical preservation commission having issues with code enforcement, updating them. It, we need to, it's, I think we've, we're slowly identifying what needs to be worked on, and how to do it is going to be the question. How are we going to think outside the box to really get it done? And there has been some offering from the public to assist us, but we need to start identifying exactly which ones we want to tackle, I think, as a council. And it's interesting, you mentioned Rhonda under the city manager department, because if you look at the whole flowchart, Rhonda is her separate identity. And so I know there's clear communication between, obviously, her and the city manager, but it's even how our structure, how our government structure is not being adhered to, how it's originally put, it's modified. So, it's a lot to work on, but I'm just going to leave it with that thought, and I'm going to put it back to the, I'm going to turn it back to the public for input unless some other councilmembers have any questions or comments.
Could I just briefly respond to that? Because I think you covered some new material that wasn't covered, and I don't want to get too carried away with responding to some of this stuff. I think during the thin times, we tried to get commissions and committees to do work themselves, and I think we ended up spinning our wheels when we did that. A lot of time and effort was spent because they didn't have the support from staff or the support from the attorney's office. So I think, just like the city council needs to prioritize its projects, I think the commissions need to decide what their highest priorities are, and as Mr. Howard indicated, we do now have an attorney who's available to help at least during this interim period with the HPC and with the planning commission, and that's an extra resource, and we have staff for both of those bodies. But, you know, we're drawing on the same staff, so they're going to have to set their priorities. The other thing with procedures is properly executing procedures depends a lot on personnel. And we went through a period when we either didn't have personnel or the personnel we had didn't have the qualifications that our current personnel has. For example, we had a part-time planner who was spending all of their time writing planning reports and none of their time going over procedures and making sure procedures are in place. Now we have a full-time community development director who's really just come on board, who has lots of experience with all of these procedures in other communities, and she is actually in the process of bringing us up to speed in having the proper procedures. In fact, the issue that came up this evening with the M1 zone is because she identified a procedure that was not in place that should have been in place. In the public works department, we didn't have an in-house engineer running that department. Having an in-house engineer, especially the one we happened to get, has been a huge step forward for us. So, yeah, and I think more recently, we recruited a very high caliber finance director from the city of Ventura that we were very lucky to have. So I think a part of the answer is that we didn't have proper procedures in place because we didn't have people who knew what those procedures were, and because we didn't have the resources to address them. But I do think that by getting competent personnel and by focusing on those procedures, that we will improve.
May I say one thing?
Councilmember Haney?
First of all, before we turn it over to the public, Rob, I've watched you, I've watched you govern the city for the last few years, and I think coming into the recession, out of the recession, I think personally you did a wonderful job. I think to be able to have money set aside, to do the paving that we're doing right now, to do a lot of the infrastructure work that we're doing, I think is incredible. So I want to start with that. But I also want to go back to the fact that a lot of these procedures that we're missing, and a lot of the things that are, that were, all these bumps in the roads that we're running into, start from a leadership, and it has to come from the city manager, and it has to be directed to his staff, and his staff, and you would have to be the person that helps them set those priorities based on all of this, the interaction with the community as well as the interaction from the city council. It, to me, it's no different as a contractor. You know, I agree to perform a task for a client, it's up to me to make sure that my man understands the priorities of completing that task and completing that task in a timely manner. So I want to throw that into the mix also. I'm not saying you're negligent, what I'm saying is, I think that the staff now could use some finer direction as to what are the priorities that they can do along with their additional work and responsibilities to help improve or enhance some of these small issues that we're running into. For instance, I can start with one, I'm pulling a permit with the city of Ventura. I go into their office, I'm given a two-page checklist. I know exactly what is expected of me as a contractor, and they know what to receive from me. It's a two-way street, and it works, it's clear, it's understandable, it's definable, and there's no headaches. So, again, that, obviously, they started somewhere and they've initiated that, that's what I would like to see us do, is you sit down with your staff and ask them what are some of the issues and the concerns that they're hearing from the public, and even the one that was directed tonight from the public about how we interact with staff and our tone. That's a simple, that's a simple one to correct, but it has to be helped, determined as to, is it a priority one or is it a priority three, is it a, you know, and that, I believe, is what we need more of.
I'm going to turn it to the public, Mr. Coyne.
To the mayor and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to comment, and I'd like first to welcome the new interim city attorney to the dais here. I know that Mr. Fletcher will be missed for his attention to detail and his wry wit, and I look forward to Mr. Howard surpassing those standards. I'm asking you tonight to include the protection of Ojai's cultural resources at the earliest opportunity and as a standalone agenda item. The last two times that cultural resources have been on the council agenda, they have been lumped in with directors exemptions and zoning clearances. While the three were both involved at 1105 North Signal Street, the long-term protection of Ojai's archaeological heritage is called for in the city's general plan and requires specific attention. At the last council meeting, the agenda item discussion bounced back and forth between cultural resources and zoning clearances and directors exemptions, leaving the focus diffused and difficult to follow. Beyond that, Ojai's cultural resources are still at grave risk as the council moves towards creating a system to protect them. There are a number of properties at present where applications have been filed with the city where cultural resources are potentially present and at risk. Once again, it is Ojai's citizens that are bringing this to the planner's attention for needed proper evaluation of those resources. Such evaluation is still not on the planner's radar screen for some reason. You could tonight provide clear instruction to staff to consult with our local Chumash and follow the Ojai general plan and state law, that would help. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Arbun, you're going to have to help me.
Mark Abramyuk. Yes, so, my name is Mark Abramyuk, I'm an archaeologist, I live at Fourahnan Kanata. And I just wanted to make a comment. The Ojai general plan policy asserts that the city shall develop programs to identify and analyze known cultural resources, attempt to discover potential resources, and plan for their appropriate examination and disposition. It's a term, potential resources, that I'd like to bring to the attention of the council since it is no big secret that Chumash cultural resources have been dug up by accident in Ojai. This needs to stop. All sites are important, not just the ones that have been documented. This is because each and every site served a specific function in a much larger Chumash cultural system operating throughout the valley. Whether the site was a campground, an activity area, or a home base, each served a role in our understanding of Chumash society as a whole. This, of course, means that every site is an invaluable source of information about human societies in general and how they operate. More attention needs to be paid to cultural resources. This issue is paramount because developments are being planned without a clear, rigorous protocol for preventing potential cultural resources from being destroyed. Thank you.
Pat Tumamayet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Laura, councilmembers. I have a letter here, and I have to apologize, it, I'm sure you'll have to share this letter. It's in regards to the last meeting I was, I attended, it was about a comment that Kathleen Wald had made in her discussion with Katie Sanchez, a commissioner from the Native American Heritage Commission. I'll present it to you. It's a formal letter of complaint on her comment, but that's not why I'm here, actually, tonight. The other, to follow up on the last meeting, I mentioned three particular projects that might be at risk at adverse effects within the city of Ojai that might be planned and may have permits already issued. Well, it turns out there might be a few others other than those three, and I would like to address those, and I, we have met with Kathleen, and we'd like to know the status of those, that list of other properties that are at risk. And if you talk about priorities and goals, that's our priority. These things are going through so fast, and they've already been, they're in process, in progress already. So, I would like to address it to you guys, that we need priority in this, we need action now, and I hope that you guys will take a look, go back to Kathleen, find out what status is and what she's planning to do in her procedures of addressing these issues. We're at, our time's running out, and I think that, you know, decisions need to be made, and I hope that you guys will certainly take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Tumamayet Stensley?
Stensley.
Stensley, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Laura, councilmembers, staff, and community, those present and those watching. My name is Julie Tumamayet Stensley, I'm the tribal chair of the Barbarano Ventodano Band of Mission Indians. I'm not going to repeat what everything has been said so far, but it is important that we do keep our culture of 10,000 years plus alive and valuable and viable here in this community, especially for the generations yet to come. A little background on our family, in the consultation or meeting with Ms. Wald, which was welcomed, and we thanked her for that opportunity to be able to talk, in- was welcomed, and we thanked her for that, that opportunity to be able to talk, in that, our focus would be on the consultation and how it's going to take place. We need to be able to access records here. We were denied that. I provided the records that are in the files here. We were told that we have to go to the clearinghouse. You know, there's a, there's a whole process of consultation, and it's going to take a long time for everybody to get on board with what that means. But we are local, we grew up here, we've been here presently, our family, since the 50s. But our family is here from way back, three villages in the Ojai Valley, and we all, we come from a bigger background, covering three counties and two of the four-channel islands. Both Patrick and I are on the most likely descendant list from the Native American Heritage Commission. I am a commissioner myself, been there since 2007. Our tribal band, the Barbarano Ventodano Band of Mission Indians, have been around, established that in 2002. So, you know, we are the local people. I, we, I explained to Ms. Wald that our family is, besides our cousins, are here in the valley, that's it. And Patrick and I are the only two who are being responsible and speaking up and protecting, and we wear many, many hats in our culture. I'm an educator, I do consulting, I do the cultural resource monitoring at the death of our father in 92. It was my responsibility to take over. I do blessings. David Burry even asked me here where I did an invocation. We do many, many different things, and we are covering all these other counties too, where our descendancy comes from. So the SB 18 housing element, just to give some, that was a misstep last year when you did your housing element in your general plan. We should have been consulted at that time. It is law. So that was, that was overlooked. We would like to just be able to, you know, we're going to be right behind the tractors when these development projects that have been approved. We're going to be out there watching them. And you don't put Batco drivers and project managers looking for our, and telling you, oh, if we find something, we'll stop. That never happens. So we will be there when these projects are going on. And when trees are removed, there's a, there's a whole nother, you know, place there when we're talking about our trees in the valley. A lot of the roots are holding, in some cases, human remains or our artifacts. So there's a lot of places and potentials for destruction of our culture. So we will, are looking forward to more meetings and to helping city council staff and through this process. We have a nice, small, little group here, and I appreciate the help that they've been giving us too. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deborah Pendrey.
Thank you, Mayor Lara, councilmembers. Deborah Pendrey, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. We just wanted to share some observations and food for thought, perhaps, from the environmental angle on goals. First, I do want to say we feel your pain on capacity and a for effort to all of us in this community. So looking at the list of goals under Public Works, Community Development, et cetera, I see $1 million for road overlay, including complete streets design concepts. It's my understanding, the Master Bike and Pedestrian Plan, which is way outdated, got exorbed into the complete streets policy, and just want to make sure we don't lose the language that, about pedestrian, the importance of pedestrian and bicycle needs in our community because it's been exorbed and doesn't have its own dynamic document. And then in that same list, we do have pedestrian bicycle crossing improvements, which I guess kind of ties into the $1 million road overlay. So there is some language there. And then under Community Development, we talk about neighborhood planning project, which obviously, there's a lot of crossover and communication that needs to happen on complete streets. I mean, they're just, they go hand in hand, really. So just the idea that the left hand and the right hand definitely need to know, you know, what each is doing and working together so we're not duplicating or, and, or actually, you know, doing something that takes us a step back or so. So wanted to share those observations on that. And also, the comment here in the report that says the budget has been shaped around the goals established by prior city councils, but we can also probably agree that a lot of times, goals are shaped around the budget that we have to work with. And to that, the food for thought here is, we affect global climate change, and global climate change affects us. So the Green Coalition, we hold by the idea of asking, how will an action affect seven generations from now? So the question isn't so much, what will this cost us, but what will it cost our children and the planet if we don't? It's kind of the opposite of opportunity costs in a, in a business plan. And I'd like to leave you with two quotes. The first by John Muir, "When we try to pick out anything by itself, we find it hitched to everything else in the universe." And, "What is the use of a house?" "What is the use of a house if we haven't got a tolerable planet to put it on?" Henry David Thoreau. Thank you.
Don Tidring.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, thank you for being here. You serve as the heart and the mind of this city. Your decisions impact the lives of all of us. Thank you for being, for letting us be a part of this process. Tonight, we are discussing your vision and goals for the upcoming year. The vision and goals that will become Ojai's vision and goals. Let us help you. We all know why I'm here. I am here for the same reason that I have stood before you nearly every city council meeting for the last four months, to urge you to direct staff to protect Ojai's cultural resources, the archaeological sites and sacred places of the Chumash and their predecessors. We don't have the luxury of pointing to an ordinance right now. There is no ordinance to protect cultural resources. Let 2015 be the year to protect cultural resources. Over the past four months, it has become abundantly clear that city staff has repeatedly fallen short in properly identifying and mitigating potential, significant adverse impacts to cultural resources as required under the general plan and SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. First, there was 1105 North Signal Street, then the Ojai Valley Inn, and now we're finding out there are even more. A list of priority properties has been provided to city staff to assess potential impacts on cultural resources. We are awaiting response to this report. While we are encouraged by very recent efforts to consult with the local Chumash, an applicant can walk up to the counter tomorrow and be issued a building permit that might potentially destroy 10,000 years of Ojai history and the history of the Chumash people. There is grave danger in what is happening here, so what can you do tonight? The same thing we've been taught to do when we were younger, when we faced danger. Direct staff to stop, look, and listen. Stop the issuance of building permits on properties that we've identified until the issue of cultural resource protection can be addressed. Look into the city's procedures for identifying and protecting cultural resources now, for both current developments and new applications coming in. And listen to concerned citizens and the local Chumash tribal members who are knowledgeable experts in this area. It's that simple. I urge you to act now to protect cultural resources, assign cultural resource procedures its own agenda item, and recognize the legal and ethical obligation of protecting Ojai's cultural resources today. I urge you to make protection of cultural resources a priority, starting today. Thank you.
Meg Goodwin.
Meg Goodwin, 304 North Montgomery Street. Basically, Christine Golden and William Wyre covered what I was concerned about, which is sort of not understanding procedures to approve things and just kind of willy-nilly not listening to your commissions. And also, definitely, we need a cultural resources ordinance that protects our history. And so I'm glad everybody brought that up. And also, I would just love to see you guys consider looking at the big picture of the pesticide use in this valley, because now they're spraying for the citrus iliot. And I think Ojai is such a small enclosed ecosystem that if we don't really, you know, and all of our water comes from our watershed, which all the pesticide drains into, we really need to look into making Ojai not just a tree city, but a pesticide-free, organic city, and prove that you can have flourishing agriculture without, I want to say Monsanto, but I don't want to invoke their names, so I'll just say without pesticide. And I also just want to thank you guys for being, you know, working for nothing, basically $100 a week, and having full-time jobs during the day and doing what you do and having to take all this, be the face of the city management and all that, because it's, it's a thankless, unending job, and I really appreciate what you all do. So thank you, good luck with your goals.
Thank you. I don't have any more speakers cards, but anybody else wishing to speak on this item from the public? No? Then I'll turn it back to council. Councilmember Wyre.
Mayor Lara, I, I've been thinking a lot about this whole matter of the cultural resources. I've been listening multiple times for, the citizens have come forward with their very specific research and recommendations, and we seem to have gotten a bit of an impasse in terms of trying to promote communication between the advocates for and protectors of the cultural resources and staff. And I just, I'm going to direct the question to Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard, is it, I, let me just say that I have, before I ask the question, I've been trying, and I was an economist, not an attorney, to understand SEQA, SB 18, what's maybe coming down the pike in AB 52, and so on and so forth, the confidentiality issues with cultural resources, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm no way on top of it, but I'm trying to understand as much as I can, as quickly as I can. And I'm wondering if it would be advisable for you or Mr. Simmons, especially with Mr. Simmons being a, be part of, specifically associated with the HPC and MPC right now, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission, that there be some sort of consultation, or direction from council for consultation, with one of our city attorneys, staff specifically, the community development staff, and the representatives that have been repeatedly coming here with their concern from the community. There seem to be issues about what information can be shared or not shared, who are the proper representatives, what are the procedures for doing that, you know, so on and so forth. And I'm not sure I'm comfortable with those type of what amount to legal determinations being made by the community development director without a person, the city attorney, being part of those discussions. That's my question. Would that be advisable?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me answer it this way, and it's kind of two-part. From my own perspective, as your legal advisor, I don't have a problem with it at all. I've met with members of the community in my previous life when they had issues, whether it was through council direction or city manager direction, done it many times, would be happy to do it here. I don't control other members of staff, the city, that's why I'm answering it sort of a two-part. I think the city manager needs to weigh in on his staff, maybe obtain some more information as to what dialogue has occurred in the past, where they are, whether there is an impasse, as I think I heard the word used, whether there is some, some value in further meetings, or if there's value in looking at potentially some legislation, like a moratorium, to protect cultural resources while further zoning and perhaps a cultural resource protection ordinance is studied. But going back to your, to your point, certainly, I don't have a problem with meeting with members of the community, whether it be a representative or, or a group. Be happy to do it.
And part of the reason I'm asking that is I would really value your report directly to us as one of the, part of being the client, the city councils, part of, you know, the overall body of the city, which is your client, in kind of, in helping us to frame the issue. Before I'd be willing to say anything with respect to moratoriums or be advocacy on that, I'd want to know, I'd want more due diligence. But I also don't want resources being destroyed inappropriately. So before moving into like a formal pause, I would hope that staff would maybe agree we'd need to slow down a little and get the city attorney involved and maybe helping us get educated about this whole matter.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Wyre, again, I'm pleased and available. It's really where you are with staff. I mean, I don't have much background in terms of what dialogue has existed between staff and these groups or individuals. And so I'm lacking that background. I'm a little bit, not hesitant, but I just don't have enough information. But if it's more of an opportunity to meet with someone, gain information, be able to convey an issue consistent with the statutory scheme we're dealing with, whether it's SEQA, SB 18, and other legislation that's currently pending, be happy to do it.
Councilmember Haney.
I don't know how, I don't know how this is formulated, but what I'm hearing is we need a cultural commission. I think that's what I'm hearing. I'm not sure if we're ready for that. I don't know if, I don't know, I wouldn't even know how to, how to start. I don't know if we should direct the city manager to start that ball in motion. And I, I would like to hear more from the rest of the council people. But along with that, it's, the same thing that you touched on, Betsy, earlier, was an economical development commission too. If someone's going to help us write or define an ordinance regarding cultural issues, it sure seems like we'd want to bring in the experts in our community, as well as our experts and our city attorney. And combine those resources. So part of me says, that, part of me says, do an ad hoc committee. I'm not sure if that's the way to go. And it sure seems like these cultural resources are going to be with us the rest of our lives and the rest of the duration of this Ojai community. So we've created a Recreation and Parks Commission to help us, guide us through that. We've created a Planning Commission to help us, guide us through that phase of it. We've created these commissions to help us to develop the right language, the right ordinances, and the right ways. So I just don't know how to go about it, but I would not be opposed to something like that.
Councilmember Clapp.
Well, ever the pragmatists here, we are a small community with a limited budget, and we're already struggling to finish the goals from the prior goal-setting session. I hesitate to create another commission. Even when I talk about an economic development one, that's kind of like a pipe dream, because the reality is, we are stretched so thin that to create another commission, who's going to sit in at that commission meeting? Right now, you know, Steve McClary sits in for the Arts Commission, et cetera, et cetera. There's a staff member that has to sit on those commissions. They're already stretched really thin. So to add yet another commission, we've already added the Building Appeals Board, is probably not realistic economically and staff-wise. You can't, we can't overburden our staff to that degree. That being said, I just think we need some guidance on how we incorporate cultural resource preservation into our policies. And I think it really is as simple as that. It's not simple, but it's as simple as that. I don't think we need to turn it into another, another bureaucratic body. And maybe I, Mr. Howard, you could suggest the simplest, most pragmatic, most economically feasible, less, the least amount of burden on staff to get this matter resolved, because it does need to be resolved, but we have to do it within the confines of our transient rental ordinance, our vacation rental issue, our complete streets, and our, what is it our call, our neighborhood planning, and all these other things that we're doing. Skateboard park lighting at night, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. To add yet another layer is just unrealistic. So, Mr. Howard, do you know So, Mr. Howard, do you know of any way, shape, or form, or Mr. Clark, any feedback on this so that we can take care of this matter in the most efficient manner possible, the least amount of staff time, the least amount of money?
Yeah.
Okay. Round out the half.
I forgot my magic wand.
I mean, is my right?
Yeah. So, yeah, when we had a discussion at the last meeting, I think it was, we had several topics, including cultural resources. And my understanding is that the council asked that we have a discussion of cultural resources as a standalone item as soon as possible. So, we have been putting that on the tracking agendas coming up, and I think in March we plan to have a discussion item. Now, that's not going to be a super in-depth discussion item with an ordinance attached to it and all that, but I think it'll be a start of the educational process. And certainly, bringing the city attorney into that discussion is a helpful piece of information. But I think it's, there's some challenges to face, because on one hand, you have the need to protect cultural resources, but on the other hand, you have people who have property and limited budgets, and putting them in a position where they have to spend a lot of money may not be the goal that we have either. So, trying to, I mean, that's going to be the big policy decision that you guys are going to have to make, is how far do we make people go, and how much money do we make them spend, based on what evidence?
And we also have to balance that with the other items that we prioritize. And we can't say, okay, this, we can't just, which is why you're talking about some sort of moratorium or something in order to...
So, I, you know, a moratorium on building?
You can't do that. You can't do that. But we can't, we, we're caught with not enough money, not enough staff, but an issue that definitely needs to be dealt with. And my question is, does SEQA deal with it, Mr. Howard?
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clapp, I think in conjunction with the proposal to have this as a standalone discussion item, what I can do is present essentially a short, economical white paper on the availability of state law. Right now, stat, others that have spoken are correct, we do not have a local cultural heritage preservation ordinance. But we can provide you with a white paper on what remedies and what we do have that's available to us to use to assess the need to and the ability to protect cultural resources, and our cultural and archaeological resources, and have that as part of the discussion. I can have that for you within a couple of weeks, actually.
Yes, I'm going to, Mayor Pro Tem Blatt, and then I'll turn it back to Councilmember Wyerick.
In all honesty, my comments that I was going to suggest was exactly as Mr. Howard just said. You know, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel right now. There's certain things that are already in place at the state level that we need to be sure that we're availing ourselves of. And then as we move forward, we may want to tighten it up to Ojai. But I don't think, I don't think we have to necessarily put this on the front burner. As Mr. Howard said, in a couple of weeks, he could come back to us and let us know what laws are currently in place that we could administer just because they're state laws right now. And I think that's the quickest and easiest way to perhaps get this issue to the forefront, because it is a very important issue as far as I'm concerned.
Councilmember Wyerick.
And I agree with that completely, but would add one proviso. And that's that I'm hoping this council will give direction from Mr. Howard to review the acute matters currently in hand, in process, in the community development department, and consult with staff, review those procedures, look at whether consultations have been done properly or not with CHUMAS representatives, not leave what amount to legal determinations to the community development director. That's not appropriate. And I would just urge that we not say, well, we're going to look at this, when we have issues right here on the table that people have been bringing to us for months. And I think it calls for the city attorney to work with the community development staff to look at those procedures and how the things have been handled right now. I, that's what I would add.
So, everyone, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so everyone recognizes that will be an investment in time.
Yes.
And time is, time is money for lawyers.
And you're billing us for that, I understand.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
You're billing us, I know.
But yes, we can certainly, we can certainly include that.
Yes. And, and Mr. Clark, do you feel that's inappropriate, that you would feel that's a be appropriate direction for the city attorney to work with the community development director in that manner?
I think, I think that's a good step. I agree with what Councilmember Blatt said, is that we may not be able to do everything right now, but at least we can get a little bit of education and maybe get the ball rolling.
We can bring a little outside eye, some outside eyes and the city attorney's eyes onto what's happening right now. Okay.
So, I'm going to bring up the question again, that's just one item. How do we want to prioritize the other items looking into this? I mean, I personally agree with the direction that council has provided to staff and our city attorney in regards to cultural resources. And furthermore, I want to, and again, I know it's time and money, looking at other procedures and protocols, something that comes to mind is code enforcement. Our historical preservation commission brought it up tonight, our arts commissioner brought it up. Are we enforcing the codes on our books? And how do we look at that issue is another question that we need to face. And if we're already giving direction to our city attorney in regards to cultural resources, would it be wise for us to really have him look at how do tie in up our code enforcement? Or furthermore, if some of our codes are outdated, do we want to go that far or just identify them? Or how do we want to, but it is an issue that has been coming up, and I know we are getting a compliance officer soon, or him or her.
When?
And maybe that would be the answer to that question.
So, yeah, our, we've made a contingent job offer, and we're going through the process of the final clearances and so forth, so we should have the new code enforcement officer on very soon. And we did spend about an hour and a half today talking about how to deploy that person and what their responsibilities will be. And I think that'll make a big difference. But that, what that is, is it's enforcing certain codes, but the code enforcement officer isn't going to get at the issue that was raised by the arts commission, or some of these other issues about policies, and how those are enforced by staff. That's a completely different thing. But I certainly have heard what you have said about that and taken it to heart. So, I think one thing that I can do for you is, based on the conversation that you've had so far, and based on the things that are on the list, is come back with a more realistic work program, as to, you know, because things have been added, some things are going to have to be delayed, and get your review of that at a subsequent meeting.
Because we also have to talk about PL zone, height and noise. And if we really want our cell tower or wireless facility ordinance to be up on full strength, we need to look at those issues as soon as possible.
I didn't, I didn't even wait for you on that one.
Also...
So, we, as I said earlier, we've initiated, there's a process that goes with looking at the height ordinance, which includes SEQA, and really, that's about a 45-day process. We've got to prepare an initial study, and then it's got to go for, it's got to be posted for a certain amount of time, and then we can have a notice public hearing before the planning commission. So, we've put that in motion specifically because of the concerns that were raised at the last couple of hearings on the communications facilities ordinance. Having said that, I have to take that into account. That's going to cause me to say certain other things on this list will have to be delayed. And I think I can give you a start at that, but then you're going to have to tell me what's more important and what's less important, and do that at a subsequent meeting.
Councilmember Clapp.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, on some of these, in this list, the museum and city hall roofing, some of this stuff's done, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, it'd be really nice to have this fresh, more updated list to get a clear idea, or if some things aren't completed, what percentage are they completed, to get a sense of really how, because you look at this now, and it's just huge list to begin with.
And if I could echo that, I think in addition to things that are already done, if they could be classified by ones that are clearly already in process, as opposed to something that hasn't not yet been initiated?
Yeah, and a percentage complete, too.
That would be helpful as well.
And actually, actually, you're pretty much, yeah, maybe this chart is too hard to read.
I couldn't figure it out.
Okay.
Well, maybe I'll try another approach at presenting it.
Maybe do a, like a summary, well, anyway.
Yeah, I'll give it a shot.
And it would be great to also have our items that our commissioners are looking at, because that takes staff time, and we need to prioritize that, and maybe that would help us really decide what issues we should prioritize in conjunction with items that our staff is working with our commissioners, or even make us clarify what direction we want to advise the commissions to go.
And I'd like to echo that again, too, your comment. I think it's important that commissioners don't think that staff time is free. If you see, if you need, there's direction that council needs to give on the demand on staff time or the city attorney's time by commissioners, we should be involved in that prioritizing, because they're our advisors, and they shouldn't, they certainly should depend on staff for support, but if it, you know, it's starting to get to be too much of a demand, or we need to be in that loop.
And one thing that's really important for them to understand is that they want, if they want to have any conversation with the city attorney, they need to go through the city manager, that they don't have a hotline to the city attorney.
With, there's certain things that I've already authorized them to do, you know, if we're entering into a contract or writing a resolution or an ordinance, they need to take that to the city attorney and get the city attorney's review, and they don't have to spend an extra step going through me on that, but it comes back.
Mr. Mayor, in looking, and I, you know, we can talk about this as long as we want to, but I think that the suggestion that Mr. Clark come back with a little bit more usable list is a good one. But in looking at this, I kind of divide these goals into a couple of different categories. Those which are things that we really do want, and then those things that we absolutely have to be doing right now. And as a direction, just from my standpoint, the telecommunications ordinance is something that has got to be foremost right now, and it's, it is far ahead of the leaf blower situation in my book. So, I mean, that's something that we really do need to focus in on. And in conjunction with that, I think that the height limit is really important as well. Those are things that directly affect the quality of life and an impact on our valley. So, those kinds of things, I don't want us to lose sight of, that those are right in our headlights. As far as everything else, while we really need to look at these issues, things such as the leaf blower, or the second dwelling unit, or water-wise landscaping, those are all things that we need to work towards, but they're not, they don't have that same sense of urgency in my book. Yeah, the transient rentals are important, the visioning, the dark sky, all those are important, but right now, I mean, I think we really need to zero in on a couple of things, and one of them be the heights, and the other is the telecommunications. Because if we don't do that now, something's going to happen, and it's really going to hurt our community. The other ones, you know, sure, we want that, but nothing can happen in those areas, pretty much, that's going to affect our quality of life like these others if we don't do it.
May I add to that real quickly? I think that the vacation rental issue is a very important issue, because it is a quality of life issue. So, I would have to add those two, and add the vacation rentals on top of that. And neighborhood planning is already in motion. So, there's four huge things right there.
Right. Neighborhood planning is in motion, and we're not going to stop that.
Yeah, we can, yeah, that's done. So, there's four things. Those are big things that take a lot of staff time already. So, adding anything more, any new and brilliant ideas, I mean, is realistic.
I definitely concur with you guys. Something that else is in progress right now, too, is our website. And I think that's a tool we could take advantage of, in working and processing and being more inviting to your public, is maybe including these projects that we're putting on and on the website, on top of creating possibly a list on the website of potential projects in the future, so we don't forget about it, and we could, the public could see that we are working on it. This is more of a standpoint of being more, having a better vehicle to communicate with the public is, I think, our website, and getting public input is our website. We could utilize that as a tool to, just to get things done and make sure we follow through.
Mayor Laura, out of consideration for those in the audience that are waiting for future agenda items, I think we should, we've given enough direction to the city manager for the next step, and we should conclude this item, in my opinion, and move on to...
I just wanted to add one thing.
Yes.
Everyone has, so far, has had a pet area in this, and I'm just going to, I'm just going to say this, if we don't have 100% increase in rain by May 1st, we're going to have water problems in this valley. And for us to be negligent in that manner, and not to even be talking about water, it's not good. It's just not good. What can we do? First of all, we need to talk about water usage, we need to talk about water applications, we need to talk about water storage capacities, we need to have, like, you know, the Casitas Water District come in and do more talks, we need more education to the public, but we need to be beating water to death in this valley. We need to be talking about it on a daily basis.
Thank you.
May I make a real brief suggestion? Why don't you go to Casitas and talk to Steve Wickstrom and ask him if he would come give us a presentation? I think that'd be great.
No problem.
Okay, so we'll schedule that in. So, with that, I think that is enough direction, and I think we should wrap it up. So, I'm going to proceed to the next item. It's review and discussion of the historical preservation commission proposed revise Ojai Arcade and Levy Park pergola pendant policy, and I'll defer to staff for the report on that.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. First of all, I'd say, under the terms of our code, most signs and banners, and so far, are governed by the planning commission, but for the arcade and the pergola in particular, that duty has been transferred over to the historical preservation commission. And I know that there have been some questions that have come up about that, that the city attorney could address if necessary. In performing this function, the historical preservation commission has promulgated policies. And as it stands right now, those policies have been done at their level and have not been brought to the city council for approval. But I think as a matter of practice, even though it isn't really explicitly stated that way in the code, that policies should come as recommendations to the council, and the council should weigh in on them. In this particular case, the policies that were promulgated last spring have an effect on a couple of banner programs, and the two nonprofits that are involved in those banner programs have come to the city and asked for city council review to see if their issues can be addressed. So, one of those is the Visitors Bureau, which is a subset of the Chamber of Commerce, and they have a very big promotional activity called Pixie Month that they've used to attract writers to the community. And last year, through that promotion, they were very successful in having a large number of writers write stories in all sorts of publications about the city of Ojai, and I think is, was one of the more successful outreach efforts. They have a banner. That banner was approved for a one-year period of time, and they're concerned that a longer period would be more appropriate. But the, but the policy that the historical preservation commission approved has the ability to limit it to one year. Part of the reason for that is the cost. The other is the music festival, and they have a banner program that was also just initiated last year, and I think was in the cost range of about $5,000, and they were hoping would last for four or five years. And it involves a banner and then a lantern, and that's not provided for by the policies. So, this is really an opportunity, number one, for those two agencies which need to make decis- which need to make decisions about what they're going to do fairly soon to make their case to you. And secondly, for any feedback that you'd like to send back to the HPC about the policies that they put together.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. When I was on the planning commission, it seemed to me that the approval for the banners came, came before the planning commission at that time. But there was, there was just a select group of organizations that were allowed banners in the arcade. As I recall, it was the Music Festival. It was, oh, the tennis tournament.
Ojai Day.
Ojai Day and there was one other one. And I can't remember which one it was. Film Festival, okay. And then that was it. That was all that was approved. And I can remember when the Music Festival came into, came before us and they had the example or, you know, one of the banners. And these weren't going to be inexpensive. And it seems that that was an issue back then as to how long they would be allowed to do it. But I'm not sure. It seems to me that those major groups, I'm not sure the length of time came up. The, we were interested in colors and materials and things like that, but I don't know if it was that they were only allowed to do it a year at a time. It seemed like they had a longer period of time.
So, yeah, I don't know what the ordinance said before it was changed, but the normal provision for banners is that once they're approved by the planning commission, then they can be administratively approved in subsequent years. So, I think that may have been the case, but I don't know for sure.
So, what are we being asked to do this evening? To look at other organizations besides those? Or what are, what's the policy decision you're asking us about?
Okay, so, so, one, one policy decision, or really two policy decisions, is should the Visitors Bureau and the Music Festival be allowed to put their banners up again and if so, for how many times? The second policy issue is really a more general one, which is in looking at the policy that was adopted by the HPC for banners, are there any things that you would like to send back to them in terms of potential changes or things that you think they ought to consider as part of their policy?
May I add to that one thing, Mayor Laura? You raised the issue in your staff report and let's add to your one and two, number three. Procedures for commissions to adopt policies without city council approval. I think that needs to be clarified.
Under, I do have a question. So, you're referring to the proposed policy, item number five on 3-2, that I see that they added that HPC may condition a request for penance to return with a new request for comprehensive side program on a yearly basis, which would, which they did for the Pixie Tangerine. Is that correct? So, that's why this, this new policy wouldn't allow them to continue yearly by just approval of a zone clearance?
That's correct.
Any other questions from?
Are we the only city that has this pennant standard? I'm lost on it.
Well, I think.
Seriously, I'm lost on it. Is there confusion as to when the space is available? Is it labor intensive? Does it cost the city a lot to put them up and take them down? Is it a first come, first served basis? Is it a grandfathered in, once you have it one year, you get it the rest of your life? I, I'm just lost on why we have it.
Why we have it at all? Yeah, it's, yeah, so, so pennants and banners in general are typically governed just like signs are. And that's because they affect the appearance of the community. So, it's very common, I would say probably every city approaches it a little bit differently, but it's very common for cities to regulate pennants and banners and to have limits on sizes, locations, numbers, whatever, so that there's not a clutter of those types of signs. So, in our case, you know, within our sign ordinance, we have a section on pennants and banners. And except for the arcade and the pergola, that's administered by the planning commission under the terms of the ordinance. At some point in time, several years ago, it was decided that because the arcade and the pergola are historic, that the HPC should stand in the shoes of the planning commission for.
That was going to be one of my other questions. So, how did it go from planning to, to historical?
It was, it was an ordinance change by the city council. And I don't know the full background of why that was made. So.
Effective September 2013.
June 2008.
Oh, okay, I was looking.
Excuse me. Sorry. The ordinance that, that changed it from planning commission to HPC was 2008.
That one. I was looking at the latest revision. Yeah.
Any other questions from council? I do have two speakers card on this item. Meg Goodwin.
Hello again, Meg Goodwin. I just would love to see the Music Festival be able to keep those green lanterns because they're beautiful and they're very subtle and they went through the park and they looked really nice in the arcade. And the Pixie Tangerine Month, I think, would be a good thing to promote. And, and I understand that the historical commission doesn't want the arcade all cluttered up, but I think taking off the sponsorship names, when they were saying with Ojai Day, sometimes they would put business names or, you know, sponsor names. Like, I could see getting rid of that and just having the event picture and date, picture and/or date. But the Music Festival brings a lot to the town and it was a really beautiful presentation that they did and I don't think it's, you know, detracts it all from the city. And we do need, as a business owner, we need whatever little bit of marketing we can get for when there's something like this happening in town. It's, it does help generate some, you know, people that just show up here and don't know what's going on. They're like, oh, what's Pixie Month? What's the Music Festival? So, it is good to have the banners up. I think it's a good, a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette?
I'm sorry that my name is causing trouble.
No, that's.
Good evening and thank you again. So, I'm the executive director of the Ojai Music Festival. It's a great honor. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council members and the community members who are here tonight. Thank you. Our statement letter to the city was included in your packet, so I won't get back too much to that. It explains the position of the Ojai Music Festival on the lantern displayed in the arcade. And we are here just to restate the position of the Music Festival on this display. With great respect for the Historic Preservation Commission, the lanterns are a festive visual element in announcing the festival for us. The Ojai Music Festival is one of the oldest and most prestigious cultural organizations here in Ojai. And we are about to celebrate the 70th anniversary next year. The festival is also one of the most successful events in this community and it generates revenue through the TOT and in sales tax. Hotels are booked, local businesses benefit from patrons and musicians eating and shopping. Our audience is growing every year against all trends. Our surveys actually even show that many of our audience members come back at least once another time during the year. We believe that the lanterns do not damage our, the arcade. We're, we use the fixtures that are installed in the arches, ensuring that there's no harm to the building. The lanterns are very temporary. They're displayed for no more than 10 days. And so, it's with great respect that we ask if we can be grandfathered into continuing to be able to use these lanterns for the benefit of the community also. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments from our public? I don't have any speaker. Yes, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor Laura, council members. I'm Scott Eichraim, the CEO of the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce and also the Ojai Visitors Bureau. I do want to make two points. One, the Pixie banners are part of our marketing policy to bring not just writers, but also visitors to town. Last year's promotion was extremely successful, not just because of the writers, but just one of the articles that was written for the Chicago Tribune was picked up by over a dozen other periodicals, other newspapers, including the Star, the Ventura Star. And within six days of the first article appearing, we had 10 requests for relocation packages from people who were slammed by the polar vortex and couldn't wait to get here. But more than that, it is successful in the sense that it has increased TOT by bringing more visitors to town and that is readily visible as you look at your, your income, your revenue stream. The big point that I want to make is I don't understand how temporary signage moved from the planning commission into the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'm, I was here for the first meeting tonight, so I understand that one person's logage could quickly become another man's disrespectful statement. But the pennants for the tangerine, for the Pixie and for the Music Festival and the Ojai and all the other people who want to put them up are temporary signage and they do not destroy or detract from the architecture or the structural integrity of the arcade. And I don't see much difference between those pennants other than their physical position from the banners that go across between the historic post office and the historic arcade at Signal and Ojai Avenue. So, I don't really understand how the historic preservation has, was given the authority to determine where temporary signage can be placed and whether or not it can be placed. Oftentimes, when the Historic Preservation Commission makes those decisions, they bring their own personal aesthetic into play, which is not the way it's supposed to be done. If we adhere to the color parameters and we adhere to the physical parameters of the design parameters from the planning department for those pennants, then there should be no reason for them to deny a pennant placement because it is only temporary. Ours will be up for two weeks in April, the first two weeks before the tennis tournament. Again, it is part and parcel of a long-term promotion that we hope to extend. At this time, we have no plan to turn it into a festival. We know how much work the Music Festival goes through, how much the tennis tournament goes through to put on their four-day festivals. And we do not have that plan. But we do promote the town and the Pixie Tangerine because it is unique to this valley. The Ojai Pixie is designated fruit by Sunkist. And we are the only place that it has grown. And by promoting that and getting help from Sunkist through their social media and through Melissa's Produce, which is the primary purchaser of Ojai Pixie Tangerines, we will be promoting this town to a much larger audience. And while I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Clapp that we do need more than just tourism, we do need a greater economic base, this is what we depend on now. And I believe that putting these banners up helps not only the visitors, but also reminds the residents that they are dependent upon the citrus industry to keep this town alive. Putting a little bit, maybe too much importance on a pennant, but at the same time, at the same time, you know, my, my point is that these are pennants. We're marketing the town. We're bringing people to town. We're helping the revenue of restaurants and stores. We're increasing sales tax and TOT and it really is temporary signage. And I think that should be under the purview of the planning commission. Whether you change that or not, I do request that you grandfather us in under the old, under the old ordinance and allow us to continue at one, two, three years at a time. We know that our current pennants are too lightweight and we, we want to make an adjustment to that with either canvas backing or manufacturing new pennants, but we cannot go forward with that until we know whether or not we are going to be allowed to hang the pennants. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak on this matter? Yes.
My name is Jane Wirick. I'm on the board of the festivals. I'd just like to say, it's fun, it's festive, it's inviting when we put those things up. And it's just something that we've always done. Plus, I'd like to say that there is a monetary investment from the festivals when they bought those things and they were approved. So, to deny them, to use them, is to say, it is a nonprofit who has spent their money to make a festive and a very productive and a very lucrative thing for the city.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this matter? No? I'm going to turn it back to council.
Just a point of information. Should I not go now? I just have a query. Is there an issue with the Pixies signs and the, I mean, the Pixie pennants and the lanterns under the old policy of the HPC, not the current one? Just asking. In other words, is this issue purely attributable to their developing this new policy adopted June 12, 2014 and on page 3-9, effective January 1, 2015? Is that the source of this issue on those particular two matters?
So, yeah, it is on the Pixie one because of the one-year provision, which was not there before.
Okay.
I, I'm trying to pull up whether or not the lanterns would have been permitted under the old policy.
Well, let me, let me get to my issue here. I have a, I have a significant issue with a policy of this scope, which, and I've read the, the city code and I've read this policy and I just have a problem as a councilperson where the policy of this scope not coming, being revised this significantly and then being considered in effect without coming to the council for review and approval. I think that's a problem. And I have, I've read the code here and I've had a number of questions, I just today directed to Mr. Howard regarding some of the issues where I think it's questionable whether or not, in fact, they're operating in all cases within the code, but that's a matter of debate and due diligence, which is the point, which is why it should come to council before adoption as a policy. And so, what I would like to see is that whatever appropriate language we need to take to suspend the issue, suspending enforcement of the issue with respect to the lanterns and the pennants be put in place and we agendize for, at a future meeting, a full review of this policy.
And, and I also was thinking around those lines, but I, I differ to think that this is a review and discussion item for us to make suggestions and if we do not agree with it, to send it back to the Historical Preservation Commission and highlight what we have concerns about so that they know. I don't think that we need to make a decision right now on this policy because I, I also, I've read through the whole staff report. I read through the whole minutes. The, the, the language that they added is very restrictive. It gives them a lot of, in my point of view, a lot of subjective opinions on whether they're going to allow a pennant or whether they're not going to allow a pennant. Adding the condition, it's, 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 to me, it's not defined. And that's worrisome because are we going to allow pennants? Are we not going to allow pennants, whether we like it or not? There's just a lot of ambiguity to this policy, in my opinion. And again, it's subjective whether a flag or a lantern is nice or not. It's, it's, to me, I have no, I'm not against it or not for it, but I just think that personally, I would like to determine whether we're going to allow them or not and have clear guidelines. And what, for example, number three on their proposed policy contributes to Ojai identity. What, what are they looking at? Could you elaborate on that? I mean, that's, if you ask different organizations, they'll probably give you a different answer of what contributes to Ojai identity. Again, I, I don't, I understand why it's coming to the historical preservation because it is a historic landmark and they, and it is altering to somewhat that landmark. landmark, and it is altering to somewhat that landmark. And I think that if we're following our code, I think that we should go through them, but we should have some clear guidance from people that are really trying to use this marketing tool.
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, sometimes you step back and look at these things and you say, what in the world are we thinking? Obviously, because it's a historic landmark, the HPC should have a say on whether or not you're gonna allow a banner, or, let's say, a banner or a lantern, whatever it is, it's gonna be allowed, right? But once that's determined, you know, how far do you go? Do you then say, all right, well, the HPC has said you can hang a banner, but they're not gonna get involved in the design of the banner, because all they care about is the fact you can hang a banner. So now let's get the Arts Commission involved. So we take it to the Arts Commission to approve the design. I mean, how far do you take it? When it came before the Planning Commission, it typically came before the Planning Commission as kind of a design review, and once that banner was determined to be acceptable, and sometimes they weren't, then that banner was approved, and you never had to do anything again until you were gonna change it. And if you have these historically significant events in our town that can be on the same time of the year, every year, then why don't we just approve the fact that they can put up their, whatever has been approved the first time, and until they're gonna change that, they don't have to do anything? That's the way I see it.
And I agree with that, and I would love for staff to go back and relay that communication with them, is the fact that I think it's, what the Planning Commission used to do to approve him should be the process through HPC and clarify a little bit more of what they're looking at, and not just have it be subject to what their opinions are.
I mean, what would cause HPC to say, okay, this year, and not okay the next year? I can't, I just don't see it. It's, they're not using their subjectivity to say they don't like the way it looked. I mean, it's a banner, it's a lantern. Once it's determined that it's a significant event in which we should be able to display, I mean, I agree there shouldn't be commercial advertising on it, but once we've determined the design of whatever it is, then until that design is gonna change, I don't think we should do anything but allow it. Seems simple to me.
Mayor, I think the statement is keep it simple, without throwing the stupid in it, but it, I mean, we're beating this horse to death. I mean, we're not gonna be able to fly a banner of a dead horse. I mean, I think we should send it back and tell them to simplify it, as simple as they possibly can. I agree completely with Mr. Blatts, and, you know, if I approved it this year, why wouldn't I approve it for next year? I mean, we're just complicating these things.
So how do we craft a motion tonight to make it clear they can use, they can continue with the lanterns and the pennant? What do we need to say tonight? What kind of, what's a motion we need to have tonight? Mr. Howard, what is the, what would be the motion that we could pass tonight to have them, what, to keep using the lanterns and keep using the pennants for the time being?
The green lantern. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Wirick, consistent with the agenda, you do have the ability to make modifications to the policy as necessary, and I think what I'm hearing is a motion to send the policy back for simplification with the following stipulation, that lanterns that have been previously displayed at the arcade by nonprofits or city in conjunction with these events continue to be permitted until such time as the policy comes back for the council for consideration, number one, and number two, that pennants continue to be permitted as they were in the past until such time as the matter comes back to the City Council for consideration.
Rhonda, do you have that motion? I'll, I'm gonna make that motion.
Roll call.
Clapp?
Yes.
Wirick?
Yes.
Haney?
Hee-hee-hee!
Blatt?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes. Item number four is tree monitoring update, and we're gonna have a presentation from Edison, so Cal Edison.
Edison, sir?
Should we start with staff report, or should we?
Yeah, I can, I can make a pretty brief.
Before and then go to the presentation? Sorry, if you would, just give us one more minute.
So, back in August, the council directed us to look at three things relating to trees. First of all, was to send a letter to Caltrans in order to initiate an agreement that the city be able to prune trees within city limits on Caltrans property. And as I indicate, we do have an email in here, which is their response, indicating that we can do that under the terms of our existing maintenance agreement, but that doesn't mean that we always will. They retain the right to do it themselves when they choose. The second item was to bring back changes to the tree ordinance, requiring permits to trim oak and sycamore trees, and setting guidelines for over pruning according to ISA standards. And so in your staff report, we consulted with the Tree Committee, because we don't have in-house expertise in this area, and there's a couple changes that were suggested. First of all, right now, for oak and sycamore or heritage trees, there's a four-inch rule. We asked them if there should be a two-inch rule, and they said two inches is too restrictive, but that they could develop language that would address the amount of canopy and foliage that can be removed without a permit. So if you agree with that direction, we would have to go back and work with the Tree Committee on developing that language. The other part, and the part that I think Edison wants to address, is that we set a standard for how utility, routine utility maintenance trimming is done, and that we monitor the work. And so we actually did put a monitoring program in place, and we've collected a fee for monitoring this year's trimming. But frankly, there hasn't been a substantial amount of trimming, so we don't, there hasn't, there haven't been any bad results, but there haven't been very many results either, so we don't know how that would work. And then our understanding is that the ANSI, A30 Part 1, is the appropriate standard for this work. So that's really the staff report, unless you have any questions. And Edison did provide a letter late today, which I have not had a chance to read, and has a presentation ready.
Any questions from council to staff? If not, then I'll welcome Edison to come and give their presentation.
Mayor, Laura, I just wanted to make note, the letter is on the dais in front of you, and it was emailed to you.
Good evening. My name is Paula Ames-Axt, and I'm an arborist for Southern California Edison Company in the vegetation management department, and this is Vince Otis. He's also an arborist. He's our manager of the Vegetation Management Department, and we have a little presentation tonight for you. We'll keep it short. It tells you what we do, how we do it, and more importantly, why we do it. So I'll show you this real quick.
Yeah, we're gonna kinda cut.
Right there on the.
Right here, okay. First of all, you don't invite the gardener to a council meeting, so, but I'm here anyway. I am the vegetation manager for the Southern California Edison Company, and we wanted just to come out and, first of all, explain a little bit about our program, talk to you about the importance of what we do and why we do it, and we also wanna talk about moving forward and some enhancements with the proposed ordinance that you guys have in place. Let me try this here. I'm pointing. Should I point it?
Press the button right or left, and I'll do it.
Okay, I'm pressing the button. The tree guy should not be doing this.
Well, you're just efficient and fast.
It wasn't the tree guy. So, you know, we don't have to go with the presentation, we actually have a handout, and if it doesn't work, I'm good with it.
You can mention it, we can move it back here.
Okay. So, you know, for the sake of time and respect to time here, it's ironic, right now in Boston, they're undergoing eight-to-ten-foot snowdrifts, and here in Southern California, up in Bishop, I don't know if you guys are aware, there's a big brush fire that has been burning, it's burned over 7,000 acres. With the drought, and I heard the water talk here earlier, it's no secret, we're gonna have a heck of a summer as far as fires concerned. A lot of what we do, I mean, we want to keep the lights flowing, we want to keep the lights on, but a lot of what we do in the tree trimming activity that takes place is the direct result of keeping the trees away from those open exposed wires. A lot of really bad things happen when you do that, when you get those two together. So, we basically have 1.4 million trees in our entire inventory. We cover cities, Newport, Ojai, Ventura, Santa Barbara, wherever we have Edison infrastructure or the areas that we have to trim. We're regulated by the Public Utility Commission, and above the Public Utility Commission, we also have to deal with the federal laws and stuff that regulate how we perform our program. You can go to the next slide. As I mentioned, keeping the lights on is key to our program, but also reducing outages and making sure that, you know, your public has the power they need to operate. We also want to protect our facilities and make sure that they don't get damaged by either the trees falling over or the winds associated with the Southern California climate. Next slide. Again, a lot of this presentation is geared towards why we do it and the rules and regulations that govern our industry. Most of our folks are ISA-certified arborists, are utility specialists. Our contractors are also required to be ISA, utility-certified, and also aware of all the standards that apply to the tree care industry. Next slide. Again, more standards. You can keep going. If this was eight o'clock, I'd be a little more inclined to go through all of this with you. So I'm not cutting it short. I hope you're respective, I'm just being respectful of the time. So, the main reason why we're here is we want to talk about some trimming that's gonna take place, some of your ordinances and that, and again, you know, I want to remind you that with the fire season and the incoming Santa Ana winds, and you guys get the sundowners up here, it's very important that we keep the proper clearance between the trees and the wires. We're here to work with you, we're not here to be working in an adversary-type manner. We want to partner with you and make sure that we're meeting your needs, we're not destroying your trees. On the other hand, that we're getting the clearances, and we're meeting the guidelines and the rules that are set forth by the commission and all of the other entities that regulate us. So, our local public affairs person, Patricia Sprig, she wasn't able to attend, but she's gonna be the liaison that works in between and works with you folks on the ordinance, and we just want to participate in helping you form that. Southern California Edison is a tree-lined USA, you guys are a tree-lined city. We're happy and proud to have been that. We've been a tree-lined utility for over 12 years in running. I haven't actually trimmed trees in this community, but I have worked in the vegetation organization for over 15 years, and I'm a 35-year Edison employee. I know what happens when fires come through communities like this. I know what happens when you have Santa Ana winds, or you have the sundowners, and you don't have the clearances between the vegetation and the wires. It's, like I said, and I'm not trying to scare, but, you know, we have a community up near Bishop right now where people are dealing with the aftermath of a brush fire. So, with that, Paula, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I just wanted to show the fire threat map. These are, this shows the green is little or no threat to people all the way down to the red, and that is the map for the Ojai area, which means for us is that wherever it's green or light yellow, we have to have an 18-inch clearance typically from the lines to the trees. Everywhere it's red, we need a minimum of four feet clearance, and then for transmission, it goes all the way to 25 feet.
Can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Because we're recording, we're on TV. Oh, sorry. Sorry. So wherever it's red on there, we require a minimum of four-foot clearance from the trees to the lines, and then for transmission, the larger lines, it can go all the way to 25-foot clearance that we require. Can you go through a couple more slides? Okay, that one, keep going. Palm trees are a huge issue for us, of course, because palm trees can't continually be trimmed, because they're nowhere to grow except up, and they're gonna grow into the lines. Also, the fronds, dead fronds, they can blow all the way from a quarter mile into the lines and major cause of fire for us. You talked about the ANSI standards. We, our contractors are required to be trained in the ANSI standards, and that's exactly how they have to trim. They also have certified arborists onboard that oversee their work. Go on. We have these lookup-and-look brochures that we give out, and we can give you some as well, and it just talks about how important it is, or that it's a law, that you can't come within 10 feet of high-tensioned lines for equipment, that the qualified, the tree trimmers have to be qualified to work within that 10 feet, and that the property owners can actually be held liable if they hire somebody to trim within that area and they cause, they're injured from that. We have the Right Tree, Right Place, I know you have those in your lobby here, talks about how important it is to have the right trees under the lines. Even, and on top of that, Edison has easements that typically allow us to trim or remove any trees in the easements. So working with your ordinances, and we have that as well. Just a picture of, you know, the wrong trees in the wrong place, there's, you want slow-growing, usually a maximum of 25-foot. You know, they can only be pruned a certain way, and it's not gonna be a benefit at all, because we're just gonna be, continue to be trimmed on those types of trees.
One thing I want to add to is with the drought here in California, down in the local San Bernardino Mountains, we had what's called the Bark Beetle Project, where we went through there, and the predominant tree in those local mountains were pine trees. Up here, it would be oaks, and the oaks are being affected by a beetle as well, and are showing, in California overall, are showing a significant die-off. And so, you know, if a tree poses a threat to fall over after it's died into the lines, we want to make sure we address those and take those out. All of the trimming we do is built into our rates. I want to say that. This isn't where we go out and charge customers, your customers. This is all built into our operation and maintenance program, which is basically rate-based. We're always trying to keep our rates to our customers down, so any opportunity that we have to remove trees that are in the wrong place for utility application, we take advantage of that. So, again, in ending this presentation, I just want to leave you with the fact that we're here to partner with you. We've been trimming trees in the community here in Ojai for probably 80, 80 or so years, if not longer, and, you know, until we figure out a way to get the electricity without having the wires, and everybody says underground it, but as a contractor, undergrounding, you probably know is a very expensive process, and it's not always in areas where you have arc sites and historical landmarks and stuff, it's just not always practical to go there and do that. So, are there any questions that I can answer?
Yes, Councilmember Wirick.
On the last page of your letter, you state, "Where possible, SCE also maintains compliance," where possible being the operative word, "also maintains compliance with requirements set forth in the American National Standard for Tree Care Operations, ANSI." And you just had a slide up there about following ANSI standards, but then you, in this letter has where possible in front of that.
Yeah.
And then later on, in that same paragraph, you use ANSI standards, citing them as the, for exempting utility pruning operations. So I'm kind of a little confused about saying, "We have to follow ANSI, but then we can also decide when we don't want to follow ANSI."
Well, we're not saying that we can't, we're not trying to decide, and we don't go out and indiscriminately- out and indiscriminately pick trees that don't fit the profile, but there are certain trees that because it's very fast-growing, or the main leaders on those trees aren't conducive to trim to ANSI standards, that we have to do some deviation in that. But where practical, or where we can perform to ANSI standards, we absolutely hold that near and dear to all of us in the tree care industry.
And if I could just add, in emergency situations as well, that's when we wouldn't necessarily stand by those. And I wanted to say really quickly, the ordinance part of it, I had talked to Mr. Grant, and Mr. Clark and I have been speaking as well, and we would like to sit down, because there's, I think the intent of the ordinance, as it's worded, is, I think we're on the same page, but our attorneys, I think, have some problems with the exact wording of it, because we understand, under a permit fee, that it's okay to have your arborist look at the work if that's what you want to do, to the fee, but we can't pay an hourly rate. I think it's worded a little weird, so we wanted to talk to Mr. Clark and Mr. Grant again, maybe this week, meet with them and give some feedback, and that's, apologize for that letter being so late, we were trying to decide if we should present it tonight or at a different time, so I apologize for that being so late.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clapp?
First of all, I'd like, are you not done?
No, go ahead, Mr. Howard.
You want to speak first?
No, I can wait.
Okay. First of all, I want to, I tell you that I understand the hazards of trees in powerlines, that you definitely can end up with fire, so, and I respect that, you have a need to manage that, but I want to tell you a personal story. I came home one day, and I had a tree that had been topped by SCE, and it wasn't even under the powerlines, and I managed that tree by a certified arborist, and he managed that tree and prunes it for me. And I called SCE, and it was actually done in the late spring, nesting season in a drought. So, we were talking already pruning at the wrong time of year. So I called SCE and had an arborist come out, an SCE arborist, and he came out and he said, "Yep, that tree shouldn't have been pruned." As a matter of fact, our internal policy stated that before they pruned your tree, you should have been contacted and given the opportunity to manage that tree yourself, and you weren't. I put in a complaint, and the complaint was interesting, the complaint was addressed by the person that pruned the tree, it was interesting, they said, "Well, no, we were doing it for health and safety and fire hazard reasons, and we deny your claim." So it was interesting to me that my complaint was forwarded to the person who did the pruning, which I felt was really an inappropriate way to handle a complaint, it was the fox guarding the hen house.
Absolutely.
So, to me, there was improper pruning standards done by SCE, you pruned in the spring, I wasn't notified, the trees were not under the powerlines, the certified arborist prunes my tree and takes care of my tree, and one of your own arborists said it was improperly done. At that point, I had to decide whether I was gonna take it further, and I'm very busy, and I chose not to. The reason I'm telling you this story is because, one of the reasons this is before us is because of that experience, and the one, one of the reasons utilities were brought into this, the kind of strengthening of this ordinance was because of this experience. So, I would like to, I would like to encourage you to work with city staff, to develop a policy that addresses this kind of issue, this kind of problem that I've experienced, and I know other people in town have experienced it as well, I've seen horribly done pruning jobs that have not been by sort of by ANI, what is it? ANSI standards at all, purely not. And so, I really want to see some cooperation here, and I think it's very important.
Yes, and I know of your situation, and I apologize for that. Typically, they leave door cards at least twenty-four hours in advance, so I don't know what happened, and it was before I had this area, so all I can do is apologize at this point, because I'm not sure exactly what happened, but I do want to say that I have been working very closely with Mr. Grant and Mr. Clark, we've had lots of meetings, and we've given them lots of information, we've met with our, they've met with our contractors, our contractors, we've had several meetings with them, so we're trying really hard to work together and...
And I want to address that, first of all, I don't understand why we'd be trimming a tree that's not under the powerlines.
Well, I was told by your arborist, there's a thing called tree shopping, that the arborists are sent out, the tree trimmers are sent out with a list, and, but they get paid by the tree, and they, and then quite often they'll shop, and they'll say another tree has come along, and he, in his own personal experience in SCE, has seen this happen, that they'll tree shop, and that's what he told me.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna check into that, and I know you hear that all the time. One of the things that we've done, so that our contractors aren't incentivized to go out and tree shop, because that is a common practice when it comes, the tree crews want to get their tree counts and that, but one of the things that we've done is we have strategically-sourced contracts, and this particular contract, if this has happened within the last year, and I assume it has, if you're speaking about it. Our lump-sum contracts are built so that we pay the contractor one lump price to perform the work. That takes away the incentive for them to go out and add trees along the way. So I'm, you know, I'd like to delve into it and find out exactly what happened, and which one of our staff members came out and may have said that, you know, that the work that was performed, so, I'm the man, you've one, one neck to choke, so to speak, so. I use that lightly.
Well, I appreciate that, because to me, I think we're a town that really cherishes our trees.
Yes.
And particularly the oak and the sycamore, you know, the heritage trees, et cetera, and my personal experience wasn't with a heritage tree, but I had a tree that was pruned that is not, that is specifically stated in tree books not to be topped.
Right.
So, it's just an ongoing, it's a problem that we need to address, and I really do appreciate that you're here, and I would really like to solve the problem in a way that solves, that takes care of the safety matter, but also respects the trees and how they're pruned.
Absolutely, and I would agree.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on the council have questions? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to add a little bit, this letter, which frankly, thanks to the alertness of staff, I wouldn't have seen, I didn't get it until five o'clock, is from Southern California Edison's attorneys, they're claiming essentially that General Order ninety-five, Rule thirty, thirty, I think, four through seven, or thirty-four through six, preempts the city's ability to regulate tree trimming within the canopy of the powerlines. I'm not so sure that's completely correct, I mean, I've had issues with the CPUC and arguments claiming preemption, because they've occupied or entered the, they entered the field, but I'm not at a point where I can tell you definitively yes or no, because I've read the letter once. My interest is reading the cases they cite, because I'm well familiar with General Order ninety-five. So I'll be taking a look at this and just letting you know whether, essentially, we're preempted and don't have jurisdiction, but at this point, I want to let you know where the letter, it's written by their attorneys, these folks are...
Now, remember, that letter was written by an attorney and not a tree guy.
That's correct.
And I'm here, I'm here to say, we're here to work with you.
And I respect that partnership, but it may be an attorney-to-attorney response.
I want to thank you for coming and doing the presentation, I was intrigued by a particular slide, the one where you actually showed a map where the green, the yellow, and the red, and I would like to see where we fall in there, it was too blurry, so I...
Ninety-five percent red, I would say.
Ninety-five, the city of Ojai, the county?
Well...
It's because there's...
It's got both on it.
It's got both on it, yeah.
And I know that they have a copy of the PowerPoint, or I can...
Get us a copy.
Yeah, just because, because a lot of times we're confused with county boundaries and jurisdictions, so it's, because we're only four-point-two square miles, so we're not, we're surrounded by counties, so.
One thing I want to add to, and your fire guy was back there, a couple of things, just for your awareness of how, where we are with fire, we have what's called Operation Santa Ana, where we actually, all of the affected counties throughout our service territory and cities that participate, we go out and we do an annual patrol with the fire agencies that will participate, and they actually go out with us, we either get in their trucks or they get in ours, and we patrol all of the high-fire, one-way-in, one-way-out canyon areas, just to make sure that the work that we've done meets with their expectation levels, and if we haven't met their expectation levels, they tell us what to do, and we do it immediately. I just can't tell you how high on the radar fire in the communities of which we serve is important and big on our list, and tree trimming activity is probably one of the highest-risk activities, now that we've closed our nuclear generating station down, that we have out there, so we are really heightened and very aware of the fire danger, and we work very, very hard to make sure that your community is relatively safe, because, you know, we see it, we go in after the fact and rebuild, and it's near and dear to our hearts, so.
Well, thank you. I am gonna open it up to public comment, I see a couple of people in the audience, I don't know if there's any, yes, Ms. Wyrick?
Well, there's no...
I'm sorry.
I don't know if I'm getting, Cynthia Wyrick, 107 East Deliso, Ojai, I don't know if I'm getting up to speak, just because I was trying to incite a riot back there over the banner issue, thank you, Paul, thank you, Randy, and it was going to be successful until you guys spoke up, so, anyway, my question is, and it's probably in all of this literature, are the smaller branches chipped on site? When these guys do their, when you do your job, yeah, are they chipped, yeah?
I guess we'll do this to two forms.
Why not?
It depends on the application, if it's on the side of the road where you don't have much area to chip it and that, then no, but if it's out where we can limb and scatter, you know, we try not to take the material outside of the areas, or bring material in from other areas that could have potential disease pests or anything like that.
Okay, well, two questions, and one may seem silly, but, you know, we, a lot of people are doing drought-resistant yards here, and the chips, if you are chipping, if there could be a one spot where they could be put for people to come, that'd be great, you know, free chips are great.
I'll speak to that.
Okay.
Part of our commitment in Arbor Day celebrations, and Fire Safe Councils, is if we can get some information, we're limited in how much time we can do, but we absolutely have the ability to send the resources, a chipper and a couple guys to chip branches and create a pile, or create a place where the general public can come and pick it up, we'll commit to doing that for the community, and we do that for quite a few throughout the Southern California area.
Okay, one more question probably for you, is, am I loud enough? Do I have to get in this thing? Ojai is full of artists, and on a recent studio artist tour, you know, it was abundantly clear how many artists work with wood that has fallen, I mean, they're not gonna go hack down a beautiful old oak tree just because they want a section of it, but, you know, if you are taking out a really, really old, beautiful tree that's all burled or gnarled or something, is there any way that, or any place that those sections could be, you know, I mean, you can't chip those because they're too big and too hard, but where they could be placed and, you know, everybody could say, you know, first come, first served?
I'll say yes and no.
Okay.
I...
I'm sorry, I know that sounds frivolous.
Until a few years ago, I was a big collector of wood and that, and, yeah, now...
So I'm not so silly.
Now, we absolutely, I mean, if we're taking down a tree and the community is there, we don't own these trees, so if, if the commu, but we just don't know if we're going to be taking down a tree until we go out and pre-petrol.
Right, of course.
But if we're aware of it, we have absolutely no problem.
And you have...
We'd love to leave the wood, because that's less of a disposal cost for us, so absolutely we can leave it.
You know what I'm talking about, though, with finding beautiful wood sections to work with. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in the public? No hearing, no, I feel like we are getting to consensus where we, staff knows where we're, what direction to take, and it would be great to follow up with Ms. Wyrick's request and see, because I have actually been asked by people in the community and in the landscape business if there is a possibility of providing wood chips, and if SCE is more than willing to, I think we should take opportunity of those resources.
And not just wood chips, but not just firewood, but also, when you take out a larger tree, we have a lot of woodworkers in this community, so rather than bucking a huge piece of lumber, potential lumber up into lengths for firewood, you have potential of being able to mill up usable lumber.
And we absolutely love to leave the wood, so.
So how would somebody go about contacting you on that?
Can you run the mic? Yeah, they...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you just want to tell them or whatever, because we do have...
Yeah, they have my contact information, and...
That'd be great.
And if it's a tree that's on your property, a privately-owned tree, we always ask if you want to keep the wood, if it's a city tree, that would be up to the city how they would like to dispose of the wood, or where they would like to dispose of the wood.
Okay.
And we don't take out just big old trees, unless they're falling.
Okay, great, thank you.
And anything else, councilmembers?
On this ordinance?
Yes, I do want to talk about on this ordinance.
Yes, I do. One of the suggestions on this ordinance, pardon me, page three of nine, under Section four dash eleven oh four, number two under A, and number three under B, basically is the same language, prune limbs over four inches, I think the county is three, I would like to see if the county is three inches in their ordinance, if it is, I'd rather see three, and I would like to direct staff to come back with language to limit the amount of canopy foliage that can be removed without a permit. The reason I think that that is important to interject into this ordinance is because one of the things that I've seen through the years in this town is that people like to, they like to really prune an oak tree back, because it has such gnarly branches, and it looks quite pretty, but in the reality, they're killing the tree, and I think that people don't realize they're doing that, so I think it's really important that we start establishing a policy that we do not allow over-pruning of trees, especially in droughts. Maybe Mr. Arborist guy, or woman, both of your arborists correct, could maybe, could you address that, over-pruning with, when it comes to trees, and how that really is more of a fire hazard in some ways?
Well, oak trees are definitely the tree that we, we definitely apply very high standards, not that we don't apply them to all trees that apply, but an oak tree grows far slower than a eucalyptus tree. And eucalyptus trees in some areas, if it's next to a stream or a bed, or a source of, not maybe water that you can see, but an underground aquifer or something like that, there are studies, and here's the tree guy not, there are studies out there that show eucalyptus tree can grow twelve to seventeen feet in a year, once you begin pruning on that tree. We're on an annual cycle on our program, that is, we get around once a year in all of our areas, in some areas where you have eucalyptus, Santa Barbara and places here in Ojai, we have what's called a mid-cycle program, where we have to come in and trim those, or prune those trees twice. We always stay within the regulations of the ANSI standards on how much you can take out of a tree, but in order, before the Santa Ana conditions or before the sundowners, we take the tree on a case-by-case basis when we trim it and decide how much we're going to have to take out of the canopy of that tree, so that if it's six months or a year, we're not pulling that truck back out in the street to perform.
I understand, but eucalyptus is a whole other matter, they're really a fire hazard, and I understand that, and they need to be...
Man, there's a lot of...
They're really bad news, I understand that, but with an oak tree, over-pruning is a serious problem.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we can trim an oak tree usually on the standard height of a normal power pole, we can usually, the cuts that we have to make on an oak tree are really very small cuts.
I would love to see that, because that certainly has not been the case in the past, so, thank you, but at any rate, that's one of the things in this, thank you, in this ordinance that I think is really important that we have, is come back and have the same standard as county, which I think is three inches, and also have the canopy foliage removal standard applied to the ordinance.
Any other comments from council? No, I just, one quick one, on top of it, is... No, I, I just, one quick one on top of it is, is it would be good to include our Tree Committee in the conversation and, and, and I think they did a, a pretty good job revising and adding a couple provisions. I think they did a good job, so. If no comment, then I'm going to move on and close as the council and go into Ojai Redevelopment Accessor Agency. And then would need a motion for the... Isaac.
Pardon me, but to, to, to digress a moment, do we, do we have to have a motion at all with, I know it's a discussion item, but you, did we ever direct the city manager to send a letter to Caltrans? We did, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
So, could I have a motion for the consent calendar of the Ojai Redevelopment Accessor Agency?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Clapp?
Yes.
Wyerick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes. I'm going to reconvene in as Ojai City Council and take any reports from our fellow council members.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I do have one report and, and I'm going to give this to Rhonda. At the last V-COG meeting, one of the topics that we were talking about was the situation with sober living, alcohol and drug program facilities and community care facilities. And the handouts that we received from their staff really made a lot of sense to me with regard to how you can regulate it and the statutes to regulate it. So, I'm going to pass it on to Rhonda, who can then send it out to everyone to take a look at. The other thing that I wanted to, as I've been given some thought to, issues regarding our, our interaction with, with our citizens. I have something in my office and something on my website that I kind of can tailor to what I consider to be a, a kind of a saying with regard to our interaction with our citizens. And it goes like this. "A citizen is the most important visitor at City Hall. They are not dependent on us, we are dependent on them. They are not an interruption to our work, they are the purpose of it. They are not an outsider at City Hall, they are truly part of it. We are not doing them a favor by serving them, they are doing us a favor by giving us the opportunity to do so." That philosophy, I think, has a lot of meaning to it when it comes to the attitude that we need when people come into City Hall, as I say, when, when clients or potential clients come into my office. We have an obligation to treat them with respect because we are here for them, they're not here for us. And I think if we can think about it that way, I believe we'll get along, along a lot better with the people that we have interactions with that come into City Hall.
Any other reports from council members? No? With that, I'm going to go around the table with city manager. Any updates?
You know, I just wanted to say there were, there were a lot of big issues that were brought up today and I, I take those seriously. I think a lot of them are very explainable and I will explain them and some not so much so. But I, I recognize my responsibilities and will address them accordingly.
City Attorney, Mr. Howard? No? Chief Kenny?
Yeah, I'd like to just recognize our Ojai Police Volunteer of the Year. His name's Howard Thomas and he did over eight hundred hours of volunteer hours with the PD in two thousand fourteen, so he was selected as our Volunteer of the Year. Yeah, a lot of hours.
Good job, that's a lot of hours.
How are the new deputies working out?
They're in their sec, sick, or second month of training and they're doing good, no problems. We'll be looking forward to getting them on patrol in another two months.
I know that more than one of them, could be two or three, actually came from the courthouse's bailiffs.
That's correct, three, yeah.
I know that they were looking forward to getting out on the street.
Yeah, yeah. I did, I did like a year in custody and they're doing eight years now before they come out, so, a little bit longer.
Thank you, chief. Anything from city clerk?
Yes, I'd like to mention that we're going to have a website form on February twenty-fourth from five o'clock to six-thirty to take input on our website. The website consultant will have a, she'll be Skyping in, we're using technology, but she'll have a, what I want to say, what the website will look like, where we're going, and we want to get input to see if we're going in the right direction, so...
Could you repeat that?
February twenty-fourth, five o'clock.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, right before the council meeting and I've advertised it in the newspaper and there'll be something on our website, so I'm hoping a lot of people will come and give their input. And if we need more time or more dates, we'll talk that night about that.
Good job, great.
With that, with, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, guys.